This is the May 21st meeting of the Ways and Means Subcommittee. Before we get started with the meeting, would all please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, united by individual liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll of the Ways and Means Subcommittee, please?
Roll call of the members. Councilor Guanasso is absent. Councilor Morbido?
Here.
Here. Councilor Patch is absent. Councilor Rotundo is absent. And Chairman Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I'd also like to recognize Councilor Keefe, who is here with us, not as a member of the committee, but as a member of the City Council. Councilor Patch did send me a text message earlier. He is not feeling well. In fact, he has a doctor's appointment, so he will not be attending the Subcommittee meeting, nor will he be at the regularly scheduled meeting. We have had a prior meeting to discuss a $22.5 million bond authorization for a new Public Works facility in the past. I think we held that meeting two or three weeks ago. And in my opinion, as Chair of this committee, and I think it was a concern of some of the members, both of the Ways and Means Committee and of the City Council in general, that $22.5 million was an awful lot of money for such a facility. We want to be sure that the money that we spend is absolutely mandatory and necessary to getting the job done for the taxpayers that we know needs to be done. That being said, I know I for one, and I'll let other councilors express their views as well, but I for one recognize that the Department of Public Works and their employees have been working in and living in what I'll call terrible conditions for a long time. I know back a couple years ago, two and a half years ago now, I'm speaking personally here, two and a half years ago when I left office as mayor, we had left quotations for trailers that would have at least got the administrative personnel into better working facilities, but that still hasn't happened. Now, I am of the understanding that some area has been cleared and that some trailers, I guess eventually, are going to make their way to the city. I hope that's the case because, you know, we've all seen the videos and photos of the conditions that they are forced to work in down there, and I don't think anybody, certainly not a member of the City Council, and I don't think a member of the public would want to work in a facility like that under its current conditions. So, we do know we need something. So, that is not at issue here with myself or the members of the Council. What is at issue right now, at least with me personally, is the amount of money that we're going to look to bond and spend on this facility. We know the city has many, many needs. Public Works has many, many needs. I mean, you might have, I mean, truth be told, you have more than $22.5 million worth of needs down there. There's plenty of work that could be done with Public Works around the city. I'm just not sure that $22.5 million needs to be spent on a facility as opposed to being spent elsewhere, whether it be, you know, the trees and sidewalks and streets, the hundreds of miles that we have here in the city that we know could use attention for sure. So, with that, I'm going to open it up. We have a representative here from Weston and Sampson, I believe. I'd like him to come up and introduce himself at the podium and go over how he came to these numbers, but before doing so, I'd like to recognize a member of the City Council, our City Council President, Jessica Janino, who just came in and joined us. I'd like to welcome her to the meeting as well. So, sir, if you can state your name and address for the record and go over the...
Good afternoon, thank you. JP Parnas from Weston and Sampson. My office is out of Foxborough, Mass. Thank you for asking us here tonight. I have prepared another packet here, a short one, and I'll try to go through it briefly, just explaining how we got to those costs, what those costs mean, and how that compares to a lot of historical bidding and construction data that we have. As a really brief background, you have the presentation that we gave, I think sometime last fall, explaining the programming process that we went through with the DPW, extensive interviews with the staff, inventory of equipment, et cetera, to come up with a program that would meet their needs currently and for the future, including, you know, new vehicles, et cetera. We looked at the existing site at that time. We had three different alternates to discuss. I think it was agreed that the building, a brand-new building in one shot, was probably the best, the best way to go. It was the most cost-effective. So, in this case, what I'm going to try to do is explain first, and if you can, if we flip through, and unfortunately, I don't have the electronic presentation going here, but the first page with the conceptual estimate of construction costs has the detailed breakdown of how we got to the initial construction cost of $17.8 million. And again, that's, that's just the construction cost without any, any soft costs. We have a lot of historical square foot, per square foot costs that we apply to different parts of the building because different parts of the building will cost at different, at different costs. So, those are all added up based on square footages. We have historical data costs for a lot of the industrial equipment, fueling systems, site work, et cetera. The numbers to point out in this are near the end, that we have a 10% here, a design contingency of $1.5 million, and then two years of 4% escalation. Those are important numbers because those are adding into this cost. Now, this was done last year, so this has escalated out to 2019 currently. With that, we get this total of $17.8 million and with a cost per square foot of $377. I will come back to that number near the end to explain how that compares with actual bid costs. The next page is then the soft costs, which are typically a part of any of these projects. And again, I will explain all of these in a little more detail, but that is where we come to the $22.5 million approximately, including design fees, OPM fees, et cetera. I will get in more detail of those in a couple more pages. So, again, the next page there is the breakdown of construction costs. And again, it was just, this is just a reminder of to be able to explain to the Council how we, where all this money goes during construction. And unfortunately, the electronic copy had some nice photos of some of these, this work, but I think you understand. So, site work, you know, there's a lot of DEP regulations that we have to meet to, for stormwater management. Network in this case also includes a new salt shed and a fueling facility. Foundations in this case, the soils on this existing DPW site are quite difficult to work with and will require a fair amount of improvement. So, that is also adding a fair amount and will make the foundations themselves a little more complicated. Metal building in this case, typically, we design these as a pre-engineered metal building system. It's a, it's a large span framing system that is very efficient and utilizes insulated metal panels and an insulated roof system. Very efficient construction, very simple. Interior, interior construction, you know, basic, very durable finishes. We're not building mahogany walls, and it's all drywall and, and masonry. And then that, that number also includes the industrial equipment, which is crucial for the maintenance, vehicle maintenance. Mechanical and electrical and fire protection and, and plumbing systems. Again, you know, we go as minimal as possible, but we do certainly provide air conditioning for the administration and locker rooms. But then, these buildings are very complex systems. They require gas detection systems for the vehicle storage and the maintenance areas, a lot of specialized electrical systems for the industrial equipment, and then code required lighting controls and fire alarm and sprinkler systems. And then, on top of that, clearly, there's always the general contractor costs, general conditions, bonds and insurance, and as we know, requiring prevailing wage on these projects tends to bring that cost up some, which is a state, state requirement. And then, design contingency and escalation, those are the numbers that I mentioned before. That's held early in this, in this estimate. Right now, this is a very conceptual level estimate. This is based on a schematic design, really just a conceptual design, and based solely on square foot costs. So, we have to hold this design contingency in this number until the design can get further along and we can get a real bits and pieces estimate. And that is what our goal would be, to get to, you know, design development drawings so that they, our estimators can get a detailed estimate and actually, you know, not take a square foot estimate. And that, and that's where this design contingency comes in, and we can explain that a little bit further. And then the soft costs, again, I'm sure most of you are familiar, but construction contingency typically 8% to 10% of the construction cost, you know, standard industry to carry that. It's absolutely necessary, cover unforeseen conditions during construction. And then the engineering and OPM fees. Owners, project managers are required state law for any project over $1.5 million, and serves to protect the city's interests during the project. And then, you know, everything from architectural, structural, civil site work, and in this case, again, specialized geotechnical for soils because of this difficult site, plumbing and fire protection, mechanical, electrical and technology and, and security access systems and the industrial equipment. It's all very complex systems that go into these buildings. And then the remaining percentage shown there are typical additional owners' costs, bidding costs, commissioning and testing, all required furnishings, and then moving and temporary facilities costs, which will be a factor in this case too, as, as we will have to clear the site to be able to build this building. So, to the next page that has now a summary again of the estimated costs, and I just wanted to remind you of, of the costs that I had earlier shown, that we have a construction estimated cost of $17.8 million, which is about $377 per square foot. estimated cost of 17.8 million dollars, which is about 377 dollars per-square-foot cost. And then we have the estimated soft cost and total project cost of 22.5. So, the next page now shows a, a long list of current, current and recent projects that we've put out to bid, have hard bid construction costs, and are able to project out to the same 2019, that's the highlighted column. And we're able to see that that average cost per-square-foot ends up being about 344 dollars. And now you're asking, well, ours is at 377. That 377 is including that 1.5 million dollars of design contingency. The design contingency is in there to allow for details of the project to be worked out. It's that number that we don't know until the design is completely worked out. That design contingency will shrink, and in fact, if we took that design contingency out of that current cost, we would be at about 345 dollars a square foot. So very close to that average that we find in construction for these types of buildings. And we've done hundreds of these by now and, and have seen a lot of, we have a lot of data on these construction costs. So that's a quick summary. I'm happy to take any questions or clarifications.
Thank you very much for that explanation. I'll start first with members of the committee. And Council Morabito, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, in this feasibility study, when looking at the construction cost, question that arises is, obviously, there's inflation when it comes to the cost of materials.
Yes.
Is that figured into the construction costs, or is it at current market?
No, that's included. If you look back at this, at this page with the detailed construction cost, near the end, just above the total, we have the design contingency at 10%, and then there's an escalation of year one and year two, both at 4%. So again, this, this estimate was done in 2017, so this was projected out for two years to 2019 currently. So those are the two numbers, approximately 660,000 dollars for each year.
Now, is, now, will there be ecological testing on the ground, like, does that seem to be an issue right now?
Sorry?
Testing the soils?
We did some polymerated testing last year of the soils. There was not found to be, not, there was no significant contamination. You're talking about environmental contamination?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was not significant contamination that we found. There were some minor things, more detailed testing will have to be done, but no big red flags were raised in any case.
Because I know in previous projects, there were issues.
Definitely.
They weren't significant. So what significant, what you might consider significant might be significant to environmental, EPA. And I know that held up the project for a while, so...
Understood, yeah.
If there is a holdup, do you think, do you think, how, how much of a holdup would it be in your past experience?
Well, again, it depends on the site, but we did some initial environmental testing of the site. And as I said, there was only minor, some minor things that they picked up. We'd have to go back and look exactly at the details. And again, we definitely would want to, before proceeding much further, you know, do some much more detailed testing to make sure. But that's why we have this design contingency in there. If that comes up during the design that there's some other issue, we have some money held to say we can cover that in that construction cost.
So that was my point. I just wanted to make sure, okay, we're approving an amount of 22 million.
Right.
And I look at it as, I don't want you guys coming back and be like, oh, well, we didn't factor that into the equation because that can cost, that, that can be a large sum.
Absolutely, no.
And then you're coming back and, six months down the road and saying, oh, we need 24 million, you know, so...
No, I understand. In fact, our goal really is to reduce that number, that, that, that we're starting off a number that we think is safe and, and comfortable, that if anything, that design contingency, as we get further along and, and, you know, have fewer unknowns, that that contingency can get smaller.
And I hope going forward, if there is an issue, the project manager will have direct communication with the council and let us know.
Absolutely.
We, I don't want to find out by hearsay or...
Yeah.
Be like, why is this project taking too long and then finding out after the fact? So I'd like an open line of communication, especially with a large cost to the city of 22 million.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I think it's very important that there's an open line of communication.
Agreed.
But if you can emphasize that with the project manager.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Council Morabito. Council Akif?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions. I know you answered the estimated cost of construction at 344, and we're, we're currently at 377. I'm just curious where those numbers came from. I, I mean, this is obviously your study, so where did you get the 344? Where'd you get those estimated, estimations for the cost per-square-foot?
Well, again, if we go back to this, to this detailed sheet, we broke down the building in, in, in different areas because each area has a different cost associated with it. You know, the big vehicle storage garage is going to be less cost per-square-foot than the offices, for example. So we applied a cost per-square-foot for each of those areas and then added that up, and then all the industrial equipment, et cetera. The numbers that we use there are based on a lot of historical data that we have because we've done so many of these now.
Gotcha. All right, and then the, I mean, obviously, I did notice that we were above the estimate, given that you had added in the contingencies. It's my understa, I mean, typically, when we see buildings in, in any industry, construction tends to have delays. It's very common, especially in the Northeast, especially when there's weather that comes into play.
Sure.
So it, it almost feels like even though that, that's listed as a contingency, it's more of a certainty, in sometimes my, my opinion. So I, I was just curious, I know that we're going to have to vote on, on bonding this money and approving it, is, will you be coming back with a more of a, of a hard estimate that we can, we can, I guess, I mean, truthfully, hold you to, number one? And number two is, my only other real question was the, the soft, the estimated soft costs is, I calculated it was about 25% of the project, if, if I'm correct there?
That sounds about...
It just seemed, it seemed a little bit high. I was just, just talking, I'm not in the building trades. It seemed above average in some of my, my consulting with people that are in the field, and I was just curious why, why that seemed a little bit higher.
Sure. To answer your first question, again, the goal would be, and we would have to be given authorization, obviously, to proceed with it, but the goal would be to produce design development drawings and specifications that would be a much more detailed description of the project. We could give it to an independent estimator. Typically, the city would, would hire an OPM at that stage. They would also do an independent estimate. We'd be able to compare those estimates and really have very high confidence that those estimates are accurate. And again, you know, comparing to historical construction data. And yes, that, you know, our number currently, that 377, is over, you know, sort of an average bid cost, but if you look at each of the individual bids, there is a lot of volatility in, in the bid process, obviously. So that's an unpredictable part of it as well. And then, to answer your question about soft costs, again, this, the, the second page of this detailed does give some indication of where all those numbers are going. That does, it's, it does include things like communications and, and technology, low-voltage systems for the building, which typically the, the owner provides telephones and computers and stuff like that. It also includes a slightly more substantial amount for temporary facilities because we would have to accommodate that for this project. And there may be, you know, there may be slightly additional special engineering services because of the geotechnical issues with the site, so that may be bringing that up as well.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilor. I'd like to also recognize Councilor Novoseltsky, who's come in since the inception of our meeting, along with Councilor Gwinasso, member of the subcommittee. I'll give you a chance to settle in, Councilor. I'll call on Councilor Novoseltsky right now, and then I'll call on Councilor Gwinasso after. Councilor Novoseltsky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having a facility background, when you kind of designed or skepticalized the building itself, is that the same thing you gave us just now? That's okay. How did, how did you think about the second floor of the building? I know we have office space and all this kind, but was, was there a thought about space, bringing in other departments other than just Public Works staff?
No, there wasn't. It's a pretty tight site, and we had, I mean, again, without going into the detailed design yet, but I think we would have difficulty fitting in much more than the DPW's program on the site.
Sure.
We're already cutting back, just to fit on the site, we're already cutting back the vehicle storage building.
About 10,000 square feet.
Correct, right. So I think without, you know, considering a third story, perhaps, it would be difficult to fit other program in there.
So that, that second floor is just over the first-floor office space, as you want to call it? Nothing over the...
Yeah, typically, what we would do is put most of the administration and the public services on the second floor because that would allow the staff to have locker rooms and shop spaces below, much more easily accessed.
Yeah, you know, actually, I'd like, I'd like to see some, I know we can't do it now and it's down the road, but, and I want to see this thing move forward. But I'd like to see some conceptual drawings on what would be on the first floor, other than the...
Of course.
Vehicle storage, and what would be on the second floor, layout, layout style.
Surely.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Yeah, I'd just like to see, you know, what kind of space usage...
Absolutely.
We're having on both floors, because it looks like it's only about a quarter of the building that's actually being taken up.
Right, well, the rest of the, the rest of the building really requires some very high clearance as the maintenance area.
Right.
So it would be difficult to put space on there. Typically, we take advantage of that height by adding mezzanines, which is very cheap extra storage space.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, it's, you know, I, I'm looking at the, some kind of conceptual drawing with the storage space.
Sure.
It's actually a, a, three very tight buildings that you, that you show here. And I, and I can understand that, some for the bigger equipment, some for the smaller equipment.
Correct.
But I, you know, I would like to see some, some down the road, and I'm sure it's going to come up, and it's something that, you know, I would like to see where, you know, who's going to be where in the building.
Absolutely. There's a lot of refinement yet to come.
You know, so, you know, because, and I know there's varied departments, and most of them have their own workspace that they also have an office in...
Correct.
At the same time.
Right.
So not everybody would be in that administrative...
That's correct.
Two levels. So, you know, but down the road, I, I'd be curious to see what they look like in those conceptual drawings when they are put together. So, but thank you, I appreciate it, and, and I know it's a lot of money, you know, but these guys, these guys have been waiting a long time for something that can work out of and be safe out of and have a good quality of work life. So, you know, I'm looking forward to it, you know, I don't know if there's any, anything that could be shaved, that could make it more, you know, a little more reasonable or save a few extra bucks.
Absolutely.
But, you know, I know we want to look at that and see what we can put together.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to it.
Me too.
Thank you for your input. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Gwinasso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly welcome and appreciate the, the effort that's going forward. I certainly think that if we're looking for the best package possible for our community because it's been so long in coming for this department, that, you know, they've waited patiently for years and they've experienced so many pains. The only question I have is in the construction contingency budget, is that for change orders?
Uh, yes. I mean, it's for unforeseen conditions during construction, you know, something hidden underground that wasn't found or...
Right.
Yeah, could be anything.
Because I looked at all the other line items, and it didn't appear that there's any change order provisions, and certainly, we know that if you spend 10, $10 on a budget for a, a building...
Right, well...
There's going to be a change order.
We try the best we can to have as detailed and, and careful drawings as possible, so there are minimized those change orders, but...
Have you ever thought of, when it could, and I'm not an architect, just, this is just way off, and I'm just venturing an opinion, because of the footprint and we're, like, shot in a real decent footprint that we would, we'd need and require, can we put the footprint there, cut it in half and make that left half for equipment and the right half mainly for administrative and, and for light equipment underneath that doesn't require any power, such as the trucks that would generate exhaust, keep them to the left and obviously with the, the correct exhaustion filters in place?
Mm.
Does that concept work?
Uh, I guess I'm not totally understand what you're saying, but I think the, the current concept has, really, the bulk of the building is a vehicle storage garage. It's about 20, 21,000 square feet, so it's almost half of it, of, of the footprint, well, not quite the footprint.
So, and the offices up above, below will be running equipment at some times?
No, not in the current scheme, anyway. There, the, the offices are only above sort of locker rooms and other staff spaces, not above the vehicle storage.
Okay.
The problem is the vehicle storage bays need to be quite high, so it would be almost a 30...
I think whatever the city has to do, we have to do it, and we have to do it right and give the provisions of, of workforce that all of us require so much of their services and, and on daily basis. This isn't like we get, reach out to them every once in a while. We reach out to this department daily to get, service the needs of our community, and we want to make sure that they're housed in a, in a proper facility that they deserve, as all other employees do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors wishing to be heard before I ask a few questions? No other councilors?
We're in session.
So I have a, a few questions, and I just have a few concerns. How many employees do we have at the Public Works Department right now?
Uh, let's see, about 30, I believe.
30?
Yes.
How many are administrative?
Uh, seven, from my calculations.
So we have seven administrative employees and 23 employees that are out in the streets, highway crews, sanitation crews...
Correct.
Tree crews, whatever, parks, okay. I, so, one of the things I keep hearing from my colleagues, and I've always said, I, I've been up here, was up here 12 years prior, I'm here again, I respect everybody's opinion. And this isn't about, well, they've waited a long time and they deserve something nice. Of course they do, but they deserve, but the taxpayers deserve something nice as well. And that's why we're here. We represent the taxpayers. When we go to the polls every other November, the taxpayers are the ones that come out, and they're the ones who put us in our, in, in office or out of office.
Absolutely.
And so we have to watch money being spent here. So I think to myself, as I look at these costs, seven administrative employees, you've got 9,000 square feet for seven administrative employees.
Uh, if I might, I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt. That 9,000 square feet is for administrative plus the staff facility, so that includes locker spaces, muster rooms, other bathrooms, et cetera. It's not just the administrative space, actually.
Okay, so the locker rooms and all the other stuff...
Correct.
At 305 dollars a square foot or whatever?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Well, that's outrageous to me. Absolutely outrageous. Seven employees. Do you know this room here is about 1,500 square feet? You can't put seven people just in this room right here? I mean, I, I, I find that very, very hard to believe. I've got, I've got, in my own business, my own business, we've got eight employees, we have 1,500 square feet, 1,500. It's, you know, I mean, would, would I love everyone to have 1,000 square feet of their own? Maybe. But I just think that these numbers, the way they're worked up, are really, I mean, we can give them something nice, but I don't necessarily think we need to, that we need to build this, you know, unnecessarily. That's what I view this as right now. I mean, when you think about it, 23 employees out of 30 are out of that building at all times. They're doing something, okay? Notwithstanding the locker rooms and the showers and whatever else that we want to put in there. They're out there doing work, which is what, you know, of course, we all rely on. We expect that from them, and, and, and the taxpayers expect that from them. So for seven employees, we're talking about spending 22 and a half... So for seven employees, we're talking about spending 22 and a half million dollars. Medford's facility, they just did it a few years ago, I think a little over 12 million.
Correct, there was no administration in that, in that facility, however. That was just DPW's staff.
Okay, well...
That was their choice, they, they
It's still 45,000 square feet?
Correct, but
So, you know, I mean, this is where, do you understand where my problem is?
I do, can I try to address a little bit of your question there?
Go ahead.
So I have, I don't know if you've seen this before, but this is the program matrix that we went through in great detail with the, with the Public Works. So in the administration portion of that, we have public counter, open office space, superintendent's office, general foreman's office, water, sewer director's office.
Is that, is that in this presentation that you gave today, or is this a prior one?
No, that was a prior one.
Is this the meeting you had in October?
Yeah, I can give you a copy of this, let me just
Okay, because I never received that.
Okay, so that, that totals up to about 3, 3,100 square feet. That includes, so that's not, you know, that's both the administrative assistant, but it's also all the management staff, superintendents, and
Seven employees?
Correct.
Seven people?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And that, so it's really only 3,000 square feet. The other 3,600 square feet is for muster training room, lockers, gear lockers, et cetera, laundry room, stuff like that, to support the staff that are out in the streets every day. So it's, the number that you see here is a little deceiving because it's lumped together two groups of spaces that are priced similarly but are lumped together that make this 9,000 square feet, if that helps a little bit.
Yeah, like, the way that I look at this, and maybe I'm just looking at it as somebody, I don't, I don't know, because what happens is you get into the government forum and everything goes up astronomically, for whatever reason. Everything's got to be more expensive, everything's got to be bigger than what's absolutely needed. That's just the way that government seems to operate, unfortunately. But
I understand
It just seems to me, it just seems to me that we could operate very effectively with a smaller facility, little smaller space, I mean, when I think about it, we have about 30, 35 vehicles, I don't even know if we have that many, to be honest with you.
We have 52 vehicles and
We do?
Equipment.
Are they all operational?
I believe they are, the numbers that we're including includes both some future equipment, and I believe, I mean, that was future last year, so they've already been added.
So some might be street sweepers, some might be, you know, plowing equipment, things like that?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And if you look, actually, on the last, the very last page of the packet I just gave you
This one?
That's a diagram of all the equipment that we've inventoried, including any future stuff that they've told us about. So that everything gets undercover in that case, some of it is in a, in an open canopy on the side, but that's the intention there. And again, we've cut back from that in order to facilitate the configuration of the existing site.
Okay, is this showing 50 vehicles, or am I just looking at it wrong? Maybe I'm just looking at it wrong, I can't, I can't tell. Maybe all of them aren't numbered, that, you know, that's okay, it's irrelevant, I'll take your word for the fact that there's 50 vehicles. But, you know, as I think about a Public Works facility, of course, they need offices and they need a place, because, you know, obviously, we're using technology a lot more to get things done, and that's going to continue that way. I totally understand that. What I just have a hard time understanding is, you know, to store equipment in, you know, I'm not trying to under, downplay it, but they need garage space to put the vehicles.
Correct.
Garage space.
Yes.
That's what I view it as. And I just think, when I look at some of these, I mean, I haven't looked at any other facilities, you gave us some here to look at for the purposes of this presentation, and, and, you know, I don't know what others might be out there and what they've built that, built on, but
We would be more than pleased to give a tour of several other recently constructed Public Works facilities, if anybody's interested in it. I think it is helpful to see how these get utilized. I understand your concern, I think, you know, cost-wise, they are, the office portion of it is, tends to be the most expensive, but it's also the smallest. So it really ends up being a smaller portion of the total cost. The main bulk of the building is that vehicle storage building.
I'm just thinking, when you add it all in, the site work, the foundation, everything else
Yes.
So it's not just the administrative space, it's everything else that goes along with that that's broken out in these costs.
Sure.
So, you know, you're taking a piece of all of this, and, and that's what we're adding into the cost of approving a loan order if we do it for 22 and a half million dollars. I mean, you know, what's the politically expedient thing to do, and we all high-five on the way out of here, oh yeah, we approved 22 and a half million dollars? Is that, is that really? Would anybody, I challenge anybody on this city council, would you spend 22 and a half million dollars for a building like that if you had 30 employees? I'm not sure I would, but that's me, that's why there's 11 counselors, I'm just one person. I, I just think that we would have been better served to really look at, you know, what the, you know, what the needs of our department are. We might have unique needs. I don't know how many employees Medford has in their Public Works Department, or Malden, or Long Meadow, or any of these other cities and towns that you've presented to us. I don't know how many employees they have, I don't know how many vehicles they have, you know? I mean, they're just 10 examples of costs, and, and out of all of them, I mean, you know, we're spending close to $400 a square foot. I just, I just think that's, I think that's outrageous, and, you know, I'm not, you know, I mean, again, trying to, trying to figure out where we're at here as a city these days, you know, what we're going to approve, what we're not going to approve, what goes, what doesn't go. I'm just quite shocked at the cost of a facility like this
Yeah.
Given the, you know, the logistics of the department and of, and of what, you know, what our needs are. So, that being said, what is the will of the committee? I'll take a, I'll entertain a motion from a committee member. I, I'm, you know, I, I'm kind of at a loss because, you know, we met in subcommittee the last time and we talked about, well, let's just go forward with what we have, let's put it to a public hearing, and we'll go with this number, and we'll see, we can always tweak it, and so on and so forth. I would like to think that's still the case, but I don't know where we're at right now because tonight we have a loan order on the floor for 22 and a half million dollars. Council President Janino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't initially have any questions on it, but after you spoke, I just have some thoughts that I want to present to the committee. Couple of things, I think that one thing that's really important to think about in the city, and it's absolutely our job to be fiscally conservative and really look out for the taxpayer because that's why we're here. But I think it's really important that when we build things in the city, we plan not only for Revere in 2018, but we prepare for Revere in 2058. And I think that if we look at some newer things we built, let's look at the Paul Revere School. If we had projected what the number of students in the system were for 20 years, we'd be in a lot better spot than we are now, because right now, that school's grossly under, was underestimated. They're already overcapacity, and I think that that happens with developments, and it's a hit or miss. I think that you're right in looking at the square footage, and it does seem like a very large amount of space for a very small staff. But when you look at our DPW as a whole, I think that we're extremely understaffed and undermanned, and that's something that we always talk about. So if we're looking to build a facility that's going to grow with our community, I think we need to allot for that space and allot for that growth. I think there's a middle ground that can be had, I definitely agree that it does sound large, so I'd like to see a little bit more in detail, but I want to make sure that in being conservative, we don't suffocate growth, and we make sure that there is room that when the DPW has the 30 more people that they need to service the city properly, those people have an adequate amount of space, that they're not already maxed out at the 30 employees that they have, because I think that would be a huge mistake if we don't catch that now, to under-build the site, to not anticipate for that growth that we desperately need because that's 100% the most understaffed department in the entire city. So I just really want to make sure that we're cautious and give them everything they need so they have room for more equipment, because even 50 pieces of equipment, I'm sure that there's 50 more pieces that he can say we need right now. So, just some food for thought, again, I didn't initially think about that, but I think that was a great point, and I think it was a good, good comparison to mention, you know, the square footage for eight people versus that, very well taken, but I think we should look at it as a whole and see, all right, where is the middle ground, and if there is one, I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council President Janino. Those are very good thoughts, and I can see projecting out, I absolutely can, but even projecting out right now, as I, I mean, when you look at the size of this and you look at the, I don't know, it just, it just seems, it just seems like, you know, money that we're going to be spending that seems a little unnecessary, but any other counselors have any thoughts? Yes, Counselor Gonasso.
Mr. Chairman, in terms of the Paul Revere School, we were, that was thrust upon us, do or forget about it, we had no choice. We knew the day we signed off on that, that we were 50 pupils underrated, so, to that, there's not a good comparison, but the comparison that Council President makes is very adequate. We are planning for the future, we are with potential growth, we all have a concern for the large amount of the money. Now, if it's the wish of this subcommittee to further detail and further work with the architect and the DPW people to see if we could critique it, to make it a little lesser, I'd be for that, too. I know we've waited so long, and I, and I think that the, the men and women of the Department of DPW have been waiting for this, and yes, there is no question in my mind, if you look at the costs throughout, this is way above most of the costs for all the other locations that were built in these prior bids, 2014 through 2018. This is a high bid, and, but what we have to bear in mind is, if the projection is right and the analysis is right, given to us, that it's going to be $371 per square foot in 2019, then it behooves us to act accordingly, to act as quick as possible, because if these projections are correct, it's going to jump up to 386. And then we're going to really add into our misery, we're not going to get the quality of project that we were looking for, and it's going to cost us more money in the, in the long run. So I know that $22 million is really a large sum, and it's a lot for the taxpayer to digest with so many projects going on within our community. But I think when we project our thoughts and our bases, we can somewhat prevent hindsight by saying, we have a great future ahead of us because new growth is coming to our city, and new growth is going to help our tax base tremendously. So maybe they can help in the cost of this, and maybe we can act on that basis that this new growth is going to come into our community, and it's going to be a blessing in disguise in terms of finances, and I don't know, I would welcome further discussion, but I would think that, Mr. Chairman, that a timeframe commitment on this be of the essence, that we vote this out before the fiscal year ends and, and move on, and that means we only have like two, three more meetings, so that means we have to act quick.
Counselor, I'm not looking to delay this. This was presented to the council back in October when I was not a member of the city council.
I agree.
It's just coming forward now, I have a chance to look at it, it just seems way out of line for me what I'd like to see a Public Works facility built for. I mean, you know, like, we have an administration right now that for two and a half years hasn't wanted to put a snack bar and a restroom down at St. Mary's Fields because it was too expensive. At, I forget what the cost back then was, 700,000 or something like that. Now we've got 22 and a half million dollars here as if it's just nothing to the taxpayer, we'll just, let's just approve it. Forget, you know, forget the people, the grandparents, the parents, the kids that need to use a restroom and a snack bar, forget them, you know, I mean, like, there's got to be some consistency here. And when we talk about new growth, I'm not on board with bringing more and more people into the city. So that's just how I feel about that. That's not for this meeting, though. This meeting is to discuss a Public Works facility, and, like I say, you know, not to be a fly in the ointment, not to be somebody that is an obstructionist here because I want to see this built, I just, I just thought when I saw the original numbers, the size and scope and cost of the project seemed way out of line for me with what our city needs. We can project forward, and we should, we shouldn't be building just for today, and Jessica, and Counsel Janino's point is well taken, so as is, as is Counsel Gonasso's. But, you know, as I say, I wish the Treasurer was here, our Director of Finance, because if we approve this 22 and a half million dollar loan order, that doesn't lock us in to spend 22 and a half million, is my understanding. He's not here.
Agreed to that, Mr. Chairman, he agreed to that, that does not lock us in.
Okay.
It's just the figure to put on the books, to get on the books
So we can still have conversations before this
Absolutely.
This would just be to authorize
That's right.
The loan order, right?
That's right, there's no commitment for the 22 million.
Okay, is a member of the public that I think would like, has a question? Yes?
Yeah.
We still have another five minutes, so
Yeah.
Name an address for the record, please.
John Archreggio, 30 Graves Road, Revere. I'm in favor of the, of the project, it's badly needed, there's health issues down there, but the price, 22 million, it should be tried to work out, maybe a smaller building, but I just figured this out, 22 million times 440,000 square feet comes out to $550 per square foot. That's a lot of money, and we've got to be thinking about the future, too, we may be involved with a new high school, that's going to be built. So we've got to think of all the, we've got to think of the taxpayers and the tax rate, because right now, the tax rate's very high in Revere. But I'm in favor of the new Public Works. Work out something with a smaller building or something more economical, that they have a new facility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other counselors wishing to be heard? Is it the will of the council to, to take a vote on this and report it out this evening?
Voted out favorably, Mr. Chairman, with contingency that we can talk about the final cost, but the max money is 22 million.
So to, so the vote, you know, let me ask the clerk, can a loan order be amended or have conditions placed on it?
I don't believe so. Not, not conditions on the loan order.
Can't we reduce it at any time?
Point of information, you have to vote on the loan order the way it's written.
Correct.
Doesn't mean you have to spend that money.
Correct.
But you can't alter that, so, I mean, you can, you can authorize a 22 and a half million dollar bond and spend 17. That's, that's fine.
Correct, and that's what, that's what the financial directors say.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate your leniency. That, that's where I'm kind of at, in the same understanding as, we would approve to set aside this money, but I would hope, just like I mentioned the representative from Sampson, that they would come back before us with some hard numbers, some real hard numbers, because, you know, my faith is that the council and, of course, the administration will, will break out the pencil and sharpen it a little bit and take a look at the project to make it a little bit more feasible.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more, Counselor. I wish that that pencil had been sharpened before putting the loan order before us, but we can still take a look at it and monitor the project as it goes forward, because, you know, maybe, maybe saving two, three, four million dollars, you know, when you're spending 22, some might not seem like a lot, but $4 million will go a long way toward public services for people, whether it's, it could be spent in many different ways, whether it be on, on schools, kids, parks, playgrounds, seniors, whatever, tax relief. So there's a lot of different things that that money could be used for if we watch it closely, so Mr. Chairman. Madam Clerk?
If I may just interject for a second, I like the idea of approving it the way it is, and I know I'm not on the committee, but this is my thoughts, approve it the way it is, and, and like you said, monitor it as the construction develops, you know, that it either be kept in Ways and Means or moved into the Public Works Committee to kind of oversee the design and review things as they go along and say, you know, do we really need this, do we really need that? I know the, you know, the new superintendent hopefully will be involved with it closely and the old superintendent involved in it, and talk about whether or not those particular needs are really necessary. So, you know, I know we need the building, I know we need the facility, and I don't want to shortchange them And I don't want to shortchange them any more than they really have to be. But if there's something that we can cut back on, so be it. We cut back, you know, instead of having a 400-square-foot room, we only have a 300-square-foot room. You know, and, you know, look at it that way. But I know everybody has their own little workspace. You know, we know that not every person that works in public works needs a desk. But they need something like the locker room, place to shower, place to keep their good clothes after work and, and move around. A, a little lunchroom, you know, for those that, you know, will need it. You know, those folks down there work at times 24/7. And they're going to need some things that other people not think that we need, but we do. So, you know, I just want to keep an open mind on it and really look at it and, and talk about, you know, what square footage is really necessary for a, for a particular space needs. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Would the clerk please call the role of the Ways and Means Subcommittee, and then we will report this out accordingly this evening?
Question is a dry as is, Mr. Chairman.
As is.
On the loan order and the amount of $22.5 million for a new, for the construction of a new DPW facility, Counselor Gonasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Rotunda was absent. Ex-officio member, Council President Janino? Yes. And Chairman Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order will be reported out favorably to the full City Council.
Thank you very much, members of the committee, members of the council. I appreciate your attention to this matter. And this will be reported out tonight at our regularly scheduled meeting. Unless there's any further business, this will conclude the Ways and Means Committee meeting, Subcommittee meeting of May 21st. Oh, really? Yeah.
Huh? Is that broken?
Oh, shit.
Why, was something wrong with her?
That was loud.
Sorry about that.
Good evening. This is the May 21st, 2018 Meeting of the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee. Madam Clerk, want to call the role?
Role call of the attendance of the members of the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee, Counselor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Counselor Morbido?
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Here.
Here, and Chairman Zambudo?
Here.
Here, quorum is present.
Thank you.
First item on the, on the agenda is Council Order 18-022. This is a motion presented by Councilor Novoselski that the city engineer and a member of the Election Commission appear to discuss the reassignment of property addresses.
Commissioner and Mr. Engineer, welcome.
Rep, may I take a minute to not only clarify some of the issues that happened at the last meeting, but to also just kind of bring this into perspective? Okay, so there are a total...
Positively.
Thank you, sir. There are a total of 27,719 registered voters in the city of Revia. So far in 2018, 711 voters were registered. In 2017, it was 2,069. In 2016, we registered 4,335 voters. The point I'm trying to make is of that, we had 500 changes that we had to make to invalid addresses. Of the 500 changes, three people were unhappy. One of them we resolved, two are pending. We're more than happy to work with the two pending invalid addresses. And we want to have a good outcome. Our intent is not to upset people. I understand the level of frustration here, and that is not our intent. Our intent is to have a valid database and a valid voting list so that on Election Day, we have the, and for the census, the street list book, for all that, we have the best database possible. That is all our intent. That's the only intent we have. So with that, I mean, there were other points that, and I appreciate you indulging me. Some of the points were several people were denied the right to vote. That wasn't a true statement. Anyone that has a problem or that comes to my office with a problem, we're more than happy to resolve that. The process is the direct result of a newly enacted Mass General Law. That, that is not true. Over the last two years, we have expanded our criteria by checking every address submitted on any type of request received. That includes change of potty, change of name, change of address. So we've taken a closer look at what comes through the doors, if you will. And there are two Mass General Laws that allow us to do that. Okay. It basically, I can quote the law, but it basically reads, "It applies to voter registrations for all federal, state, and municipal elections. It's to increase the number of eligible citizens who register to vote, to protect the integrity of the electoral process, and to ensure that accurate and current voter registration lists are maintained." That's only one of the Mass General Laws. Another, "The city should change the address to match the residence. We always travel the path of least resistance. The practice of not only the city engineer, but myself, is to change the address in the owner's favor. In extreme circumstances, the engineer may default to the assessor's database, and that's only because it will throw off the numbers on the rest of the street." And our goal, and I speak for Nick as well as myself, is to just maintain an accurate address list. 7,900 people are going through this process. So far, we've documented just about 500. I don't know how many more people are going to be affected, but we're hoping that it will have the same results here. Out of 500, maybe three won't be happy.
I'm saying three. There's four at this address.
Okay. Excuse me. You don't, you don't have to get, Lorna? Lorna, that is not going to resolve anything. I really want to come to an amicable decision with you.
Then stop lying.
I'm not lying, and please don't say that I'm lying.
Excuse me. Please don't interrupt. You'll have your chance to speak. We don't need to get into this back and forth stuff here. I'm not going to tolerate it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just about done. It says that census forms were rejected. All of the census forms that we received were processed. This is the fault of Patriot Properties. Patriot Properties really wasn't a factor in this. It's just he and I trying to do the best job for the city. Every registrant was sent a letter explaining the process, and the letter was done in Spanish and English. It explained to them what was going on. We did provide change of address cards. I know your tenant didn't get it, but I figured because of the meeting, and I didn't want to add anything until we had the meeting. But all of the other voters and my staff can attest to this. They were sent change of address cards. Some of them filled them out, some of them did not. We don't press the issue with them. We tell them what the story is, and we leave it up to them to decide how they want to handle it. And, and that's, that's just about it. But I, I want it known that we really want to work with everyone. We do not want to prohibit voters from voting on Election Day. That is not our intent. Thank you so much.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. I understand that you're trying to do what's right for the city, and nobody is saying that you're doing something that you shouldn't have been doing. My only argument in the beginning was that there should have been a little more education so people would know about it. Mainly us, so we could disseminate that information. And, and that's what went wrong here. Nobody's saying that you're trying to do something to disrupt people intentionally. Nobody, nobody thinks that. We know that you're doing what you feel is best for the city and what's best as, as doing your job. And so I want that clear, that we, we don't have you up here to say you're not doing the job. And we're trying to get this as close to straightened out as we can. It's never, you're never going to please everybody. We see that, we know that. But the bottom line was that some of us were blindsided by this.
I do apologize.
And that was the only, that was the only part of this that, that I was a little upset about. But it's, I'm way over that.
I do apologize for that, sir.
And I want it understood that I know you do your job, and I know that Nick does his job. I, I know what, I know what's what here. So everybody will have a chance to speak, including everybody in the audience.
Thank you, sir.
And we'll go forward. Thank you. Mr. Engineer?
So I just wanted to add a little bit. Obviously, the impact on the voting and elections is significant in terms of people being able to vote and that sort of thing. But the discrepancies in the addresses throughout the city in general, it's sort of a broader problem. There are discrepancies in the database related to mailing addresses of properties not matching legal addresses. You know, individual properties using more than one address, you know, and then also addresses being not properly, you know, properties being not properly addressed. So what we, what I try to do, you know, in general, is to reconcile a lot of those discrepancies with the mailing addresses not matching up legal addresses and, you know, standards not being upheld in terms of proper addressing of properties. And, you know, the reason for that is because of the impact it has, not only on elections, but throughout different parts of the city. So there is obviously a component that's related to public safety, you know, response to fire and, and police. There's also an aspect of it related to the post office, you know, people getting mail and not getting mail. And then there's also some impact on when people are trying to transfer properties or refinance. We run into issues there. And then utility accounts with National Grid and Verizon and even some of the DMV. You know, when you have properties that aren't properly addressed, you could run into problems with any number of these entities. And then also, just internally, when, you know, from my experience, trying to contact property owners, like, let's say, for the Sump Pump Program, when I don't have an address and, or it's not the correct address, or there's some type of discrepancy, and then the letter gets sent back, and we don't have the ability to be in contact with people, you know, properly. And then there's some more and more convenience-related issues like getting packages delivered and ordering a pizza and things like that. And so we try to, you know, like Diane said, we try to correct them in a way that it's least impactful. You know, unfortunately, sometimes least impactful for one person is, you know, impactful for another. Or maybe it impacts one person, but it, you know, it avoids impacting five other people. So there's sort of like a balance and a give and take there that you're going to end up in certain situations where somebody, you know, is going to be inconvenienced in some cases significantly. So I just wanted to, you know, kind of give a broad overview of some of the things that we run into and some of the reasons why we're trying to, you know, standardize and correct some of the discrepancies that we encounter. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll call on the committee members at this point. Counselor McKenna? No? Counselor Morbido?
I do. When looking at the whole...
When looking at the whole scenario, some of the issues that you mentioned were concerns of mine. People go to sell their house, the information on the deed, the addresses are completely that they're different from. So not only is it an extra burden, you know, selling a house is a burden itself, and they have to jump through loops to get to the next point in order to successfully transfer the deed. I look at it as an issue when it comes to if it's affecting a large amount of people. Could the city be liable? This is a Paul Capisi question, but we could be liable in a class-action suit if, down the road, if we're putting everyone through these hardships as well. So that's- is that something you guys looked into?
There isn't a hardship, and they don't have to jump through a hoop. All they have to do is come to City Hall and talk to us, and we'll be happy to come to a resolution for them. It's- we want to-
Diane, it is jumping through loops. Hear me out.
Okay, okay.
If you're in the scenario, take yourself out of your position-
Right.
And put yourself in a homeowner's position who's trying to sell their home.
Yes.
It's a very gut-wrenching, nerve-wracking experience. It's a very emotional roller coaster for them.
Okay.
Okay? And they have to- and then here they are, going along the process, and then there's a hold because someone can't get financing because the address is incorrect, someone can't buy the house, or the address on the deed is incorrect. So I think it's very crucial, as a city, we proceed with caution. Keep in mind, I think you're doing the best that you can with the daunting task and this responsibility. You know, it's very challenging, and this isn't to discredit you at all, either of you. I think you're doing the best of your ability. But my concern is, down the road, is can the city be held liable at some point? And that's where I get nervous, in the sense that we're basically the board of directors for the city, looking at the financial pictures. I want to hope there can be no legal repercussion.
So, Councilor, the situation that you described with, you know, with regards to somebody trying to sell their house or refinance, so those are the types of situations that by correcting the address ahead of time, we're trying to avoid. There has been a couple of different times where somebody has come to my office, and they're, you know, very upset there, saying, hey, you know, I'm trying to refinance my home or sell it, and we're closing tomorrow, but the bank won't recognize that, you know, the deed because it doesn't have the right number on it. And so at those times, you know, I've been able to issue, draft a letter that, you know, just temporarily helps them by saying, hey, these two addresses are actually associated with the same property, and then we've been able to correct it after that. Now, if I were able to catch that and correct it ahead of time, then that whole part, that whole headache with the person trying to sell their home or refinance it is avoided. And so that's one of the reasons that, you know, we want to try to correct it, to try to avoid some of those types of problems.
So how far along are you in the process, would you say?
So I think there's a misconception that this was like a specifically planned, you know, project, whereas really, you know, from my point of view, you know, what I'm doing is, as these come across my desk, you know, we try to correct them as they come. You know, I'm not- I don't have the resources to go into Patriot and take a look at every property and try to see if it's accurate or needs to be corrected or anything like that. So as they come across, that's when I'm able to address them.
So basically, when problems arise, that's when the situation is being corrected?
Right, from different places. So sometimes it's a situation like that, sometimes it's a situation that otherwise, you know, if somebody is, you know, trying to deal with National Grid and they're trying to get service, or from like, you know, Comcast, and they're not- their address is not being recognized. If we correct it then, then if they, you know, say they try to sell the house 10 years from now, then they don't have a problem then. But we address it as they have issues, you know, in the present.
With that said, you know, as you mentioned earlier, you have limited resources. For you to have to- there's- how many people in your department?
Two.
Two, okay. Now, on top of this, you have the burden of writing letters, correcting the situation. You're limited with resources. I think going forward, maybe we want to look at in the budget, maybe we should make a recommendation to add someone to that department to help them, because this is a project that's going to consume a lot of resources. And I'm sorry, your focus shouldn't be on here. Your focus should be out with the design of our city and the engineering of our city, not the addresses. So I think, going forward, I think we should look into that, Mr. Chairman.
So I think, you know, that-
Certainly would support you on that.
I would appreciate that. It is, you know, part of the engineering department's responsibility to address addresses. So it's something that, you know, we have to deal with, you know, regardless, but certainly having some help with that would be, you know, make things maybe a little bit smoother and, you know, more beneficial for us anyhow.
It is one of the many responsibilities, but it's a tedious one. And to have two people and have- how many houses are there in Revere?
There's close to 12,000 buildings.
12,000 buildings? And how many of them are anticipated to change from a two-number facility to a one-number address?
I think that generally, there's thousands, and it's hard to say how many, but there's thousands that have some type of address issue. Not necessarily that specific one, but one that needs to be addressed in some way. I would say thousands, you know, in the thousands.
Yeah, I just think it's very important to get a number on- get some kind of estimated, educated guess, some kind of hypothesis on it, so.
We can probably do that later, and when you're putting up- when you're proposing this new position, we can get the rest of the facts to go along with it, to justify it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor, can I just say something in addition to what you were saying in your comment?
Is that a question? Absolutely.
No, may I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. We actually made the conscious decision to check every registration and every piece of paper that came through our office. So it's a very time-consuming process, and we tried to do a lot of the research before it hits the engineer's desk. And we asked for his- he needs to make not only the ultimate decision, but he also needs to guide us if we can't figure it out. We also asked for a part-time position in our budget, and I don't know if the council would be willing to support that as well, because we- it is a time-consuming process that we've taken on, and we found a lot of discrepancies, so I don't know if that would be something that the council would be willing to support.
I would ask you, have you run that by the mayor at this point?
I have my budget meeting on Thursday.
Oh, good. Good, okay, great.
Mr. Chairman-
Councilor Powers?
Just one more thing.
Oh, go ahead.
One thing to look at as well, I think we need to make sure that all the systems are in sync, the assessors, computer system, engineer, and the billing department as well.
We'll deal with the details later. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two concerns. And one of them is, when people come in here, are committed to City Hall with a problem that's relative to being denied to vote at a precinct, are we keeping records of all of this? Because I certainly wouldn't want to see the city get involved in a civil rights suit down the road, because we denied someone to vote.
We're not denying anyone the right to vote. I don't know why we- what we did was-
I didn't say you were. I'm just throwing this out there.
Okay, so what we did was, initially, we did reject some of the registrations, but then what we did was, we pulled all of the registrations, and we registered the voters at the new address. We sent them a letter, and we told them that, and then we sent change-of-address cards to every other registered voter in the household to complete and return.
Are we keeping a record of those individuals?
We had a record, yes.
You say had.
We have. We do, yes, we do have a record of those people.
Okay.
But everyone has since been registered to vote.
Okay. Nick, I have a question. Are you keeping- yours would be a different situation, where a person was trying to finance a house or finance a piece of property. Are you keeping a record of people that find themselves in this situation, a log, so to speak?
Yep, so every time that an address needs some type of correction or assignment or anything like that, a letter, I have to draft a letter to make that happen officially. So I have every one of those that we've- that I've done, and then I also have a list of the ones that, you know, of all the addresses that I've had touched for one reason or another.
Okay, that would be my main- that'd be my main concern, and to both of you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor- Councilor Gwinassow. Mr. Chairman, just one point of information here. We have just two residents that appeared before the subcommittee, that want to appear before the subcommittee, and took in the timeout, taking the timeout to come and appear here. And I think because of shortness of time, I think we should give them a latitude of conversation with the two parties, namely Nick Rystrm from Engineering and Diane Clark from the Election Department. I'm going to give them as much time as they want, Councilor. Well, bearing in mind, another meeting starts a quarter over. I know that. So I'm watching that, too. We'll be cutting into your meeting. No, I think we'll- I think we can do both. Okay, so now the residents can come up and speak and name an address for the record. Just before I get you going here, I want to keep one thing in mind. There was one question I had unrelated to this for the election commissioner, and that is, how do we prove citizenship when somebody comes to register to vote?
They- the form, the top of the form, that's one of the first questions, are you a citizen? And they sign that form under the pains and penalties of perjury.
That's it? No proof, no other proof?
Unless they don't have to show their naturalization papers, unless it's after the last day to register to vote, the 20-day holding period, then if they come to register to vote after that, after the 20-day cutoff, then they have to show their naturalization papers. And they have until 4:00 PM the day before the election to do that.
That's a cause for me to go after at the state level and maybe the federal level, because proof of saying that you sign under the penalty, pains and penalties of perjury, if you broke into the country, it's pretty easy to sign under the pains and penalties. That's not for you to deal with.
No.
I just wanted the procedure. You gave it to me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt your-
That's not a problem.
Go right ahead.
Lorna King, 81 Malden Street. One of the things Diane mentioned was that she used Google Maps. Well, if you Google 83 Malden Street, a picture of the house comes up. But if you continue to Google and you Google 81 Malden Street, a different view of the same house comes up. So Google does recognize that the house has two numbers. It's two separate entrances. It's a duplex house. For those who don't know what that means, it means two separate entrances. There are four apartments in the house. We have always- we had to have the fire department inspect when we were having- we were going to- my mother was renting out, and we were told you had to have both entrances clearly marked, both numbers. Up until the time that the information was put into the assessor's database, there was 81-83 Malden Street, and then when it went into the computer, it says 83. Now, I'm going to assume, and hope that doesn't follow the suit of what that means, that every duplex house, I understand there's illegal apartments, there's houses with wrong numbers, there's all kinds of things, but this came about because my daughter got married, and she lives on the first floor with her husband, and we live on the second floor. And because she went and changed her license, all of a sudden, we have to lie to vote. We have to say we live at 83. I want to know why the house cannot contain the two numbers. It's a duplex. It does not have the problems that they were talking about. We're not getting other people's bills. Other people aren't getting our bills. There isn't a back door that has a different number from the front door. These are two front doors with two separate entrances. I don't know what you're going to do with the projects if this is an issue. And Ira, as a landlord, wouldn't you think that if this crossed someone's desk, the first thing that would happen would be a letter would go out to the owner of the house in the city of Revere, who pays taxes? Instead, my daughter gets a change-of-address card. Her husband isn't a registered voter, so he doesn't get one. We live upstairs. We don't get one until the third time I came to City Hall. And then all of a sudden, change-of-address cards and the letter came to me and my husband. So this is what I was talking about. There's four people being affected. When I was told that this could be corrected to my benefit, I was told that because 83 side at the moment is unoccupied, both up and down, that instead of having the house listed as 83, we could list it as 81. So the four people who actually do live there, vote from there, and have everything in their life say that number, it would still say that number. But I'm still being told the house has to have one number.
Let me ask a question.
Councilor McKenna?
Thank you. Lorna, do you pay taxes for two-family house?
My mother and father pay taxes for a four-family house.
A four-family house? Well, right now, they're telling you it's a one-family house.
Well, that doesn't make any sense. It's not a one-family house.
Well, then you should be paying taxes for a one-family house, not a four-family house, if they're saying that you only have one number.
That's not helpful, Councilor.
All I know is if there was an election tomorrow, and I walked up to-
That's not helpful.
If I walked up to the check-in desk at the election, if there was an election tomorrow, and I said, 81 Malden Street, Lorna King, am I going to be allowed to vote?
Yes, because we didn't affect you. You're still listed here at 81-
Okay, but if you have your way, and you have- you make this change-
You're not having my way.
Okay.
If I can stop you for a-
If this change happens for the wrong reasons, but if it happens, I'm going to have to say I live at 83 Malden Street. It will.
Can I stop you for a minute? This seems to me like one of the ones that you said might be an exception. Is it- is this possible, that this is an exception? A duplex could be two addresses? Why wouldn't a duplex be two addresses? Or why wouldn't it be legal?
So you have one building, right? It's owned by one owner. There's multiple units. The post office doesn't recognize an 81-83. My- in my conversations with the carrier annex down on Wall Street, that's what they had said to me, they don't recognize it like that. In any of our records, you know, the building department, some of the e-permitting, even the assessor, there's only a place for one address there.
Let me stop you for a minute. So say I built- I buy a piece of property in West Revere, and I put some townhouses there. Townhouses can have a potty wall and have two separate- they don't do that? Who doesn't do that?
They'd be units.
Huh?
So for example, there's a- there was some townhouses that were built on Marble Street. There, it's whatever number, Marble Street, units 1, 2, 3, 4.
So in other words, it would have one address, unit 1, unit 2?
R, A, B. They'd be different units. So there wouldn't be- there wouldn't be letters. The post office also does not recognize alphanumeric. Somehow, they- mail gets delivered, but they're-
I don't know how we got on all these years. I really don't.
I don't know, but the way I understand it from them, they don't recognize letters, they don't recognize dashed numbers.
So you're saying, she's saying we can work this out, you're saying we can't?
No, we can- it can be 81. That's fine.
Can't be 81 and 83.
It can't be 81-83. It's not- they don't recognize it. It could be one or the other. I mean, that's fine.
Okay, Councilor Nowosowski.
Thank you. Since this was my original complaint, I have a lot to say. Understanding- well, that's an issue, too, you know, where it was my motion, I'm last to speak, but- Well, you usually- the maker of the motion usually has a point. But first of all, through you, Councilor McKenna, it wouldn't be a one-family house. The houses like Lorna's is rated as a 4 to 8-unit complex. So there's four units in it, and there's different categories for the different units in different zones. So hers and mine are both duplex. Exactly what you were saying, you took my speech away. Everything you said was exactly correct. And- but, you know, to clarify, it's a multi-unit facility, is 4 to 8 units. Then there's from nine units and above is like an RC zone, and we're in an RB zone. But because our properties many years ago- But because our properties many years ago were broken up and divided, subdivided by multi, one family in multiple ways. And back then, it was like in my house, 53 DeHone Street. But somewhere, and, and when my deed was made, there was no number assigned to it in the registrar's deeds back in the 1800s. You know, and I, I have the original deed, and there was no number. It just said from the point of Nahant Ave down, 50 feet down the street and 20, 30 feet back and gave the, just the dimensions of the property. There was no number. Somewhere along the line, a number was given to it. But somewhere down the line, there were two numbers given to it because the house was built with two numbers, and it's embedded into my foundation. One side is 51 and one side is 53. Now, as far as the post office is concerned, people don't mail it to 51-53. If I live at 53, it comes to 53. My next-door neighbor lives at 51, or used to. His, her mail and their mail comes to 51. The post office recognizes it. It's been coming that way for 55 years, if not 75 years. So, you know, the post office does recognize one number, not the two. And my mail still comes that way. Now, I question, I question the requests, the card, the address change card. That card says, "I request my address to be changed." These people are not requesting it. They're being made to change their address. Now, in my case, I had a building, I had worked on an apartment. It was at 51 Apartment 2. Building department came down, gave me a permit for 51 DeHone Street Apartment 2. The Board of Health came down, gave me a permit and a CO for Apartment 2 at 51 DeHone Street. You know, it's obvious that something's not clicking here. Now, you said for two, you know, we've been working on this for two years. Why didn't we know about it? We had the, wait a minute, Counsel, madam. I let you speak and didn't interrupt you. Okay, so soak it up and ask afterwards if the, you know, the chairman wants. For two years, this has been worked on. Now, it may not have been a major project, but it turned into a major project. And it turned into a black hole as far as I'm concerned because people falling into it. Now, we get census forms for the last 40 years. 51 DeHone Street, Unit 1 and Unit 2. This one came in December 30th. 51 DeHone Street. And then all of a sudden, my new neighbor comes in, moves in January 1st. Oh, you don't live at 51 DeHone Street. You can't. It's not a legal address. But my neighbor downstairs still lives there. After this came up, Diane sent her a change of address form. She's not going to sign it. She doesn't want her address changed. Now, and I, I know you want to get out of here, Mr. Chairman, but, you know, I'm, I'm heated because there was poor communication in this whole thing. You know, a lot of our departments have an issue of not talking to each other, or talking to the people, or talking to the board of directors here of this organization. Now, in calling the Attorney General's office, they state in quote, "A dwelling address is where you get your utility bills and you register your car," according to the Attorney General. All our bills are received there. All her mail is received there. The question is, why wasn't the owner notified of this situation? Never was the owner, the owner of the property notified of this. We should have received a notice from whoever it was going to be. 180-day notice by registered mail prior to any change. Did we get that? No. We're lucky if we got 30 days. This is the communication gap. Poor, poor, poor communication. I know you guys are doing your job, trying to do your job. But in this case, there's more people being affected than us three. And the other 500 that did it, I've spoken to some of them. And some of them were afraid they couldn't vote because of the way it was worded. I'm just telling, it's the way they, they took it. You know, say, well, you know, I guess I can't do anything about it. I guess I'm going to have to change my address. This should not be put on the senior citizens of this city. And that's what's happening. They have to change their address. They have to change all their credit cards. They have to change their license. They have to change everything that they own. What they have to go through, it is a burden. And Counselor Morabito is correct. It is a burden. And a city should take that burden, not the person that lives in that house. And I can tell you that there, there may be double addresses. Dashes are never used. I've never seen a dash used in an, in an address. It just bothers me. I told, I was told originally it was 4,000 homes that are involved here. 4,000 that have double addresses in this city. Out of how many? 26,000 or 13,000, whenever the number? So that means that it's affecting, could be 8,000 to 10,000 people. Lorna's one of them. My folks, I have two folks in my apartment house that affects it. So Counselor Morab, Counselor Zambudo had a, had a citizen that complained about it, too, that was affected. It should have been zero affected. We should have been told about it a long, long, long time ago to prepare us and to let us know that we're going to be going through this at this point. We probably wouldn't have to go through this if the proper communication was made to all the people in this city through the mayor, through the city council, and everybody else that had to be. So you can tell, I'm very upset about it, the way it was done, the way it was done. And I do object to scaring people about 911 because I was talking to the mayor, and 911 should not be used as an example for one address. If they know 53 DeHone Street, they're going to get there. If it's 51 DeHone Street, they're going to get there. If it's 82 Malden Street, or 83, or 81 Malden Street, they're still going to get there. They know the phone numbers. The phones lead to those addresses. So that's all I have to say, but something better, better be done to notify all the people that this is going to happen. And I would ask that at this point, that you do a cease and desist on any communicate, or any contacts or changes until everybody is notified. Thank you.
Okay, here's the deal. We're going to have to continue this because we're not going to get this all done tonight. I've got another meeting coming up, and we've got two other items to deal with. We're going to have to come back and spend some more time on this because we're not going to resolve the outstanding problems here now.
Can I just say one thing, though?
Go ahead.
We've been doing this with the invalid addresses, and they, I, I agree, it should have been. Management was aware of what we were doing because I had to seek their assistance at one point. So we didn't do it under, you know, January 5th, 1999. I have all correspondence here that this has been done for quite a while.
To who, ma'am?
This, these are just.
To who are those communications to?
No, no, no. It was, we've been working with, we've been doing everything we're doing now forever.
This management didn't hear about it?
I don't, and I don't know why. We were just doing our job to.
Well, I, I would, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but I was told that parties were asked if the city council should be involved in this, and they left it up to someone.
We would never ask that. We would, that is not true. We would never ask that. We were just doing our job. We were just doing our job. Okay, so it's a lie. Whoever said that, that's a lie.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. So what's going on here now is the same thing that went on before, a lack of communication. There's, there's information out there that might not be true, that, that somebody said the city council shouldn't be involved.
Well, people shouldn't be speaking, saying.
All right, so let's forget all that. Going forward, we're going to communicate a lot better here.
Yes.
We're going to try to work out problems like this woman's problem here and the council's problem and a lot of other problems. But we're not going to do this tonight. We're not going to solve it tonight. I don't want to go any further with this tonight. We're going to leave this as it is. We're going to bring it up at the next subcommittee meeting, and we'll try to clean up all this mess. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Give me a quick.
I believe it was 1990, whatever that started. I here have a certificate of occupancy from the city of Revere. Street and number 81-83 Malden Street to the owner, my mother, Ella Petrilli, for a four-family dwelling, pre-existing permit numbered, dated April 10th, 2007.
I'm sure, okay, I'm sure there's a lot of that out there, too. You're not the only one. Let's, let's leave it for the next meeting.
We did do our due diligence, though, on both, both situations.
Okay.
We pulled everything.
All right, great. Thank you. I've got a couple of quick items to take care of here.
Council Order 18-142, an ordinance relative to, to departmental revolving funds.
Richard, we're going to have to do this quickly since we took up all the time. Some of us talk too much.
Briefly, as quickly as possible.
Give your name and order, name and address for the audience.
Richard Viskey, City Attorney, Budget Director, City of Revere. And I'm brought before you an updated schedule of revolving funds. This is according to the new Immunism Modernization Act and Massachusetts general law that require that this party approve revolving funds going forward. As a matter of fact, these would become city ordinance, and you wouldn't have to go through the trouble of renewing that all the time.
Can I have one of them?
Happy to answer any questions on that. If there are any, I know it was a public hearing, but just wanted to come here and try to answer any questions that were any.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Izzo.
I, I just have a very brief question because it was my understanding at the public hearing that we're almost required to do this. Am I correct in saying that? Or is there something?
You, you are, you're required to adopt departmental revolving accounts for them to be valid, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. That's all you have.
Thank you. Any committee members?
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Powers.
I, I have a concern with the revolving account for the outside water meters. I know we haven't had any to give out for quite a while. And there are, there are people that are coming in on a daily basis looking for that meter so that, you know, we're in the springtime now. We're going in the summer. That allows them to get a discount on their sewer shot. So I just hope that's something we can get, get done quickly.
Counselor, that, that, the reason why that's in there is because it didn't exist previously. So this will allow any new deduct meters that are sold will go into a special account so that we can replenish the stock. So that's actually one of the newer ones.
That's my main concern because I see people every day coming in, and they're looking for outside meters, and they're not available.
Yeah, this is designed to help that process and hopefully tighten that, that timeline up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other counselors on the committee? Okay, Madam Clerk, you want to call a roll for voting this?
On an ordinance relative to departmental revolving funds, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance will be reported out to the full city council with favorable recommendation.
Thank you. One more quick item?
Thank you.
Council Order 18-143, a parity salary ordinance for Section J of the Revere Revised Ordinances. Director of Finance George Anzoni had to leave, but he would like to be recorded as being in favor of this ordinance.
Any counselors want to speak on the parity? Okay, we'll call for a vote. Madam Clerk?
On the parity salary ordinance for Section J of the Revere Revised Ordinances, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Present.
Present.
I can't vote on this.
And Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance will be reported out favorably to the full city council.
Thank you. There's no further business for the Legislative Affairs Committee. Thank you. Welcome to the Appointment Subcommittee for the Meeting of May 21st, 2018. Before us, we have a few people on the agenda, and I'll read them as they appear. 18-134, reapportment of Raphael Construction as a licensed drainlayer. Anyone from Raphael here? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. Hit that red button.
My name is Gerardo Raphael, President of Raphael Construction.
Any questions for the membership of the subcommittee? I will introduce them as they appear. Counselor Keefe, Counselor McKenna, Counselor Morabito, and Counselor, Counselor Zambudo, and every other counsel who wishes to speak thereafter. Any counsel members of the subcommittee? Raphael, no one wants to talk to you?
No, I've been a drainlayer here for about 20 years.
Are you complaining?
Not yet. This is my second time here.
Okay, yeah, so we're very pleased that you're here. Second time in 20 years you've been a drainlayer?
No, the first time, I was here last month, but I guess they must have missed me.
Yeah.
I didn't have to speak at the podium.
So you want a discount or something?
I was getting a discount, yeah.
There's a motion on the floor to approve all in favor, all opposed. So, Raphael, you will be voted out favorably this evening by the committee at the hall. There's no need to stay in attendance if you don't wish to do so. Congratulations. Do a good job. Give the city clerk a couple of days before you get the paperwork.
Okay, thank you to city council.
Congratulations. Next is the reapportment, 18-139, reapportment of Manino Construction Company as a licensed drainlayer. Is anybody from Manino here? We will table Manino. Next is 18-155, reapportment of Tufts Construction as a licensed drainlayer. Any member from Tufts? Must be a highly educated drainlayer. State your name and address for the record, please.
Peter Tufts, 209 Mr. Gav, Medford, Mass.
Any questions from the membership of the subcommittee? Seeing none, your reapportment, Mr. Tuft?
Yes.
Okay, it appears that there are no questions of you. In the next few days, you can pick up the paperwork. You will be voted out favorably this evening by the committee at the hall. There's no need to stay in attendance if you don't wish to do so.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Do a good job for our community. Next, 18-167, appointment of Heather B. Legere to the Conservation Commission. Heather, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Heather Legere, 28 Gilbert Ave.
New appointment to the conservation. Very good. We're glad that you're volunteering your services. Any membership of the subcommittee wishing to speak? Counselor Morabito?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Heather, just want to say I'm looking forward to voting in favor of this appointment.
Thank you.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you. I, I just want to say that I think this is an excellent appointment. We've had several incidents with the Pines River overtopping in the past couple of months, and I think that this individual has a firsthand knowledge of the problems that we face with regard to conservation, overbuilding in the city, and the problems that arise down, not only there, but on the other side of the Pines also. So I think this is going to be an excellent appointment. This is a woman that knows what's going on in her neighborhood, and I'll support this tonight without any question. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Any of the counselors wishing to speak? Counselor, Counselor Zambudo?
I just want to welcome you, and I know you do a great job for us. Thank you.
Any other counselors wishing to speak? Seeing none. Heather, congratulations, and we, again, we appreciate the fact that you've offered your services to the city. We look forward to a successful year with you serving us and do a good job for our community. Again, you don't need to stay in attendance if you don't so wish to do so. We will vote you out favorably this evening, and you can go to the mayor's office sometime this week for them swearing in. Are they don't do that anymore? She sent, she sends you a letter. She swears you in. She does it all. All right, so congratulations. Do a good job. Thank you. Calendar item 18-168, Appointment of Paul Argenzio as Superintendent of Public Works. Is Paul in attendance, please? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Paul Argenzio, 245 Reservoir Avenue.
Welcome. Any members of the Subcommittee wishing to speak? Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm thrilled that Paul has been appointed to this position. We all know his reputation and what he's done all these years. He's been here longer than me, and that's saying something. But he's a class individual, and I know he's going to do a great job for us in the city, and I congratulate you.
Thank you. Counselor Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too feel very strongly about this appointment, and I'm very happy for Paul or Mr. Argenzio. Obviously, it's a sad day because he's replacing another person that's done a fantastic job with the DPW, and I'm glad to see that there'll be some ongoings to continue that work with the city. But I know Paul will do a really good job as a counselor. These positions, they respond very, Paul has always responded very well to all the needs that I've had, and I'm excited for his new appointment.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to say that every time I call you, you pick up the phone and answer it, and I love that. Thank you very much, and I support this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the pleasure of working with Paul when I was down at the Recreation Department. I always found him to be very responsive, very articulate about his work ethic, and I certainly think that this is an excellent appointment, and he's very well deserving of this reward of a promotion. So thank you very much. Good luck, Paul.
Thank you, Counselor.
This is an easy thing. Paul Argenzio rises above every time. He's the consummate professional. Most importantly, he rises above the politics, which is so insidious in this community. And more importantly, he does his job flawlessly each time, every time, and I'm assured that he will do the same in this position, and I totally support him. Thank you.
I certainly echo the comments, and I share a friendship with Paul, which I think is, he knows what I think of him, and he's been a great guy. Him and his wife have been very, very nice and kind to the Guanasso family. I certainly, the highest praise in the world that you could receive is from your predecessor of what he said to me this morning about you. He gave you nothing but the highest praise, and this is so rewarding when you hear that from, Don Goodwin praised you this morning to no end, and he said that he's a guy that's really qualified, as we all know that. You've done every job from screwing a counter to the hardest job there is, and you handle it with a smile. You do a great job for our city, and unfortunately, quite a few of us do have an opportunity, we have to call you. It's always, we're under the gun, and you handle us pretty nicely. One other counselor wishes to speak, Counselor Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't see you saying.
It's okay. I just want to say Superintendent Goodwin was, is someone with a lot of experience, someone who knows the city, someone who knows the job, and you have the same attributes. I couldn't ask for someone who could make a smoother transition to the role as superintendent. Like I said, you have the experience on the job, familiar with the city, and you, the people respect you, in the city and on the job. So I'm in favor of this appointment.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Paul, you have my support. We've worked together since, I think, 2000, and the one thing that I'll say above all is that you answer your phone and you actually follow up on what we discuss, and that is important, because, you know, far too many times in the world, not speaking about city government, you know, you make a phone call, you ask somebody to do something, and you wind up, you never hear back, you don't know where it's at, you're left in limbo, and then as a result, as a city counselor, you leave somebody else in limbo. So that's never been the case when I called you. You will go and you'll follow through and get back to me, and it makes life easy. So I want to thank you for that over the years, and I have no reason to believe that that's going to change, you know? That's who you are, and that's what you've done. I also would like to take this opportunity to thank and congratulate Don Goodwin, who has been down there, I think about the same time that I've been in public life. He's been down there under obviously difficult circumstances. You're not walking into an easy job, I think you understand that. We met earlier and talked about, you know, the number of employees you have in a city this big, you know, you really have your hands full, but obviously, if anyone's up for the task, it's you. But, you know, Don has been there, I know you guys have worked side by side now for many, many years, and, you know, we've had, we've had things from the tornado to the worst winter of Massachusetts history, and everything in between, and you guys have always risen to the occasion when you're needed, and so I think that's a tribute to both of you. So I want to congratulate you, and I want to congratulate and thank Don Goodwin as well for all his hard work.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor President Janino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am in full support of this appointment, and I couldn't be happier. I want to echo my colleagues' comments about Superintendent Goodwin and thank him for his service. He's been there for as long as I've been in this position and has done a wonderful job, but every time I email Superintendent Goodwin, I always copy Paul. And I have to say, Paul, you're so responsive. You are on top of things, and when we on the council have to call you, it's often not pleasant, you know? Maybe someone, their yard's flooded, or there's a snowbank in front of their house, or something's wrong, and that's when we call you, in the heat of the moment when someone's having a problem. And you always handle it with such poise and really make sure it gets done, and we can't thank you enough for that. So I wish you the best of luck, and I look forward to this appointment.
Well, thank you very much, and I want to thank the council for all their, here goes.
Counselor President, Counselor Novosowski?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I know everybody has said exactly what I was going to say, but just to say my few words is, thank you, thank you, thank you to Donnie. I've known Donnie since high school, before high school. We literally grew up and surely have together, and, you know, he's developed into a great guy, a go-to guy, but you're a go-to guy when you were number two, and I'm glad you're going to be number one. You're still a go-to guy, and you have a great staff to deal with, and they listen to you, and they know how to use their head logically when it explains what we want. So I look forward to working with you for the, along their future, and good luck.
Well, thank you very much, I want to thank.
Counselor Zambudo? One more.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my haste to praise Paul and his attributes and how happy I am to have him there, I neglected to mention my good friend and professional colleague, Don Goodwin, who did an exceptional job under some really tough circumstances, and he's not leaving the city, I just want to put that out publicly. He's moving into a very responsible position that's very important that I can't, I don't think, discuss tonight, but I've been assured that he's moving into this position, so I'm very, very happy about that, and we thank you for your service.
Thank you, Counselor. Paul, do you have anything to say? We have one other gentleman would like to say something. Former Counselor John Accorgio.
Paul, I want to wish you best of luck. I've known Paul going back over 20 years, going back with the Calulla administration, always a dedicated person, especially with the concert, setting up the chairs, whether it was a blizzard or a water break, Paul responded, and I just want to wish him the best of luck with his doing.
Thank you, Counselor. Paul? Paul, do you have anything to say?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I want to thank the council for all your kind words. It's overwhelming, and I look forward to working with everybody like I have for the past 38 years. And I want to thank Superintendent Goodwin for all his support and working with him for the last 18 years, and I want to thank Mayor Rigo for having the confidence in me to appoint me, and I want to thank my family who's here tonight, who puts up with the phone calls 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and that probably only going to get worse, but that's fine, and thank you again, and I look forward to working with everyone. I look forward to, at some point, cutting the ribbon on the new facility, once the costs.
You're bedwitted tonight, you saw what's going to happen, what a bright future you have.
So I look forward to gathering with everybody and cutting the ribbon on that facility at some point. So thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor. I'd be remiss if I didn't come here this evening. It's a little emotional for me, but Paul's been that guy. He's the guy that belongs there. We worked together, it'll be 20 years come January. I've had a long career, high school, school committee, council. It's been, it's been a wonderful experience. And once again, I couldn't have done it without Paul, and I just hope he has somebody like I had in him to help him get through the tough times that we've been through over the last 20 years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, there's no reason to stay in attendance if you don't wish to do so. We will vote you out favorably, the committee of the whole. Again, congratulations, do a great job, and I'm sure I'll hear about you on an hourly basis, how you're doing, and with the great support staff that you have with you, nothing but success is in your path. Congratulations. That concludes the Appointment Subcommittee for the Meeting of May 21. We have one more. We have one more. Reappointment of McGrath, oh my God, I almost missed you. Please come to the podium. First, it's 18-169, reappearance of McGrath Enterprises as a Licensed Drain Layer. State your name and address for record, please.
James Horns, 28 Oakville Street, Lynn, Mass., 01905.
Any members of the, Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. James, I saw that your license has expired. It's 6/16/17. It's on here. Have you reinstated your license up to date?
Yes, I sent all the paperwork in. I wasn't, I didn't know that it expired in April. I think I started in January, and I thought it was good for a year.
Is that you, Justin, or James?
James.
Oh, okay, so I got the wrong person. All right, I'm sorry. It's McGrath Enterprises?
Yes.
Okay.
He works for me.
Okay, well, his license has expired, so.
It might have been an old one my secretary sent.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the membership of the Subcommittee? Seeing none, we will vote you out favorably this evening. Mr. McGrath, congratulations, do a good job for our community. Again, there's no need to stay in attendance if you don't wish to do so.
Okay, thank you very much.
In the next couple of days, you can pick up the paperwork from the city clerk's office.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Congratulations, do a good job for our community. And that concludes the Appointment Subcommittee of the Meeting of May 21, 2018. Thanks for your attendance.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Monday, May 21 meeting of the Riviera City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag?
Roll call of the members, Counselor Guanasso?
Here.
Here, Counselor Keefe?
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna? Here, Counselor Morabito?
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselsky. Counselor Novoselsky? Here, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Here.
Here, Counselor Rizzo? Here, Counselor Rotundo? Here, Counselor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Counselor President Janino?
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number two, Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of May 7, 2018.
So moved. Motion, Mrs. Fenrells? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. At this time, I'd like to take out calendar item eight, I'm sorry, nine, the report of the Appointment Subcommittee.
Madam President, earlier this afternoon, the Appointment Subcommittee met, and we had the following items before us. Item 18-134, 18-139, 18-155, 18-167, 18-168, and 18-169. I ask, Madam President, that you hold 18-139 for further debate in the Appointment Subcommittee. At this particular time, I would ask that all of the above-mentioned numbers be appointed. Raphael, Appointment of Raphael Construction as a Licensed Drain Layer, reappearance of Manino Construction as a Licensed Drain Layer, reappearance of Tufts Construction as a Licensed Drain Layer, Appointment of Heather B. Legere to the Conservation Commission, and the reappearance of McGrath Enterprises as a Licensed Drain Layer, and the Appointment of Paul Argenzio as Superintendent of Public Works. I ask that you take these out and vote them all at one time.
Mr. Chairman? I just asked that we take out Manino as that was tabled.
Absolutely, I asked for that, yeah.
Madam Clerk, roll call? Shall the city council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo? Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
Madam President, at this particular time, I'd like a picture session with the new Director of Public Works.
Absolutely, we'll take a two-minute recess. Would Superintendent Argenzio and his family please come up? Thank you, everyone. At this time, we'll return to the regular order of business. Calendar item number three, public hearings.
What happened to my Subcommittee report?
We just, we went out of order for one thing, to do the appointments. We just returned to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $22,500,000 for a new Department of Public Works facility.
This time, we'll ask the Chairman of Ways and Means, and then we'll call proponents. Proponents first, so proponents. Any proponents wishing to speak on this? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents wishing to speak on this? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. At this time, I'll open it up to councilors, and I'll open it up to the Chairman, Counselor Rizzo. Did you have any?
Thank you very much, Madam President. So earlier this evening, the City Council Subcommittee, along with other councilors not on the committee, met to discuss the loan order of $22.5 million for a new public works facility. There were and are a lot of questions. I know certainly I, as Chair of the Committee and as a member of the City Council, have questions. But to hold up the progress of a much-needed facility is not something that I want to do. So I agreed to vote favorably on the $22.5 million loan order, as was unanimously agreed with, with my colleagues on the council who were present here this evening. There are some caveats, Madam President, that I think that we're gonna want to see happen along the way. For the edification of the public, edification of the council, approving the loan order of $22.5 million does not mean we're spending $22.5 million. It just gives the city the ability to spend up to $22.5 million. That number seemed very high to me, close to $400 a square foot. Seemed way out of line. But that being said, I don't want to, and I think the City Council does not want to stand in the way of progress and stand in the way of a facility that's much needed. We will want to see architectural updates along the way. We're gonna want to use value engineering. We're gonna want to obviously make sure that building this facility, we're gonna be able to put some people in Revere to work. I know we used to have a residential monitoring committee. I'm not sure if that's still the case today. But obviously, I'd love to see some Revere residents go to work down there in building that facility. So that being said, it was unanimous vote, Madam President, to approve the loan order. And unless any other councilors have some words they'd like to offer, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the loan order in the amount of $22.5 million.
Any other councilors? I see Counselor Rotundo.
Motion to approve. Personally, to reflect Counselor Rizzo's comments, I would also prefer to see a clerk of the works that is at that particular site during that construction phase. More importantly, we do have a residency monitoring committee that we should, it should be in place and ensure that, you know, local labor is put to work. So if we can fold that into this afterwards, after we take the vote, that would be great.
Thank you, Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I certainly, Madam President, I'm sorry. I certainly am going to support this this evening. I think it's been, councils of patience and delay have been going on for year after year after year. We have men down there that want to go out there and do a good job, and I think it's so necessary that we give them the adequate facilities to do those jobs for the residents of this city and ourselves when we call down there. So I certainly will support this this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. I certainly support the building of a new public works facility. But as was said at the Ways and Means Committee, we approved the $22.5 million bond authorization. And I just want to let the taxpayers know that that doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna spend the entire $22,000, $22,500,000. It could, it could come in considerably less than that with proper oversight. So that's where most of us felt, but we didn't want to hold this up because this is so long overdue. We're building this facility, but, so that's, that's where I'm at, and I'm thrilled that we're voting on this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. At this time, I'll ask Madam Clerk to call the roll.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $22,500,000 for the construction of a new Department of Public Works facility? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere relative to duplex dwellings.
Any proponents here this evening?
Good evening. Frank Stringi, City Planner. What you have before you is a zoning amendment that has basically three components. First component is to allow for duplex dwellings within the RB district. The RB district is our two-family district that the majority of the city encompasses. And right now, two families are allowed, side-by-side units with a potty wall. And we're facing issues by homeowners and contractors and builders that are building these homes with one single entrance. And it results in a building that's unattractive. It's like a block with two windows on the first floor, two windows on the second floor, and one entrance that comes in to a vestibule, and you go into another unit, another unit. Duplex dwellings allows for the same thing, allows for two units side by side, but it allows some creativity in the design of the building. And the Site Plan Review Committee would oversee the design and require a five-foot setback between each unit. So you would have two principal, separate principal entrances that would create more flexibility in design and a more attractive building. The other one is construction in the 100-year floodplain. We're faced time and time again with builders that are constrained by the 100-year floodplain regulations, and they cannot go up three stories, especially if you have a garage underneath. A garage is considered a story, so the homeowner is basically getting gypped out of a story and a half of living area. So instead of setting the ZBA time after time again, this amendment would allow three stories in the RB district where there only exists a garage under. And the other amendment reflects heights. Right now, you have to have 8,000 square feet to go to 35 feet in the RB district. This ordinance would allow you to go 35 feet for all loss, more than 5,000 square feet. Again, that gives a better design of a building. It allows for a steeper pitched roof. We have these, design of these buildings nowadays that are low-sloped roofs as a result of this ordinance. Result in ice dams, and the architecture is just not what we want to see. So these are very practical amendments that the Site Plan Review Committee is recommending. However, I'd like to make a note that in Section 5 to the City Clerk, this should only pertain to the RB district. There has been a typo that says RA in RB districts, so RA should be stricken.
Why should it only be in the RB, not in the RA?
Pardon me?
Why should it not be in the RA as well?
The RA district has a height limit of 30 feet.
And in that particular ordinance, it says to change it to 35, correct?
It would change it to 35.
And that would be universal throughout the city at that point, correct? Then that's what we should adopt.
Okay, then you'd have to change the height in the RA district and put that...
By doing that, we would, we would be doing that by virtue of maintaining the current ordinance as it is.
Counselor, we're still under proponents, and this will be going to committee so we can work out the details of the ordinance and committee is not being voted on this evening. Anything else?
Okay, that sums it up.
Perfect. Any other proponents here this evening? Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Counselors, and this will be going to Subcommittee?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to have conformity with height in RA and RB for 35 feet. I think that's consistent. We, I believe, went backwards several years back when we did that amendment within the city. I think this is time to change that portion of our zoning. More importantly, as I reflect on what's going on within the Elections Department, actually, that was just right out our door earlier today, is an argument with constituents over having one door for a two-family versus two doors for a two-family. And the person was arguing, no, this is two separate properties. This will help eliminate that issue and give two separate designated addresses. That would be consistent with the current endeavors of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you very much. Mr. Stringi, I have a question for you. If, in fact, the RA district were included, that would permit, or would it not, 25 units to be constructed in the limited industrial district down on the Pointe Pines?
No, this is concerning height.
Just the height, okay.
It has nothing to do with the number of units.
Okay.
Still, it's only a single-family home that can be built in the RA district.
Still 3,000 square feet, isn't it? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. This will be going to the zoning Subcommittee.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on the application of St. Jean's Credit Union on behalf of 151 VFW Parkway LLC, a duly-formed Delaware Limited Liability Company with its usual place of business, Care of Wind Stanley Enterprises LLC, 150 Baker Ave, Suite 303 Concord, Mass., seeking permission from the Revere City Council to construct more than one principal non-residential structure on a single lot to enable the appellate to construct a 4,500-square-foot commercial structure at 171 VFW Parkway, Revere, Mass.
Any proponents here this evening?
Thank you, Council President. Counselors, Joseph Cotojia, 1 Sprague Street, Revere, representing the applicant, St. Jean's Credit Union. We all know that St. Jean's has proven itself to be a valuable asset to the City of Revere and its surrounding communities with its branch on Shirley Ave. It is excited about the opportunity to expand those services in a location that would be a lot more convenient, a lot more accessible, and allow them to provide an expanded financial services to the surrounding community. This location was first presented to the city with an initial concept plan to Site Plan Review. Site Plan directed us to the ZBA for parking, for stacking of cars, for the drive-through, and for this special permit application. We have completed the applications with the ZBA for both parking, number of parking spaces in total for the entire parcel, as well as the variance approval for the stacking of cars. This project has also been presented to the Revere Conservation Commission. It has issued an order of conditions favorably, all of which were acceptable. We have since returned to Site Plan Review with a much more comprehensive plan, which I have copies of here, as well as a detailed traffic study, water table flow and usage report, which I also have that's available to the council. And the last request that was made by Site Plan Review at the last meeting was from the Fire Department, which asked for a report on flushing and maintenance of the onsite sprinkler systems for the entire project. I've just received those, and I will be submitting those back to Site Plan Review. We have the President and CEO of St. Jean's here tonight. If you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer. Obviously, we're looking for a favorable response. All of our justifications and submissions are included in our application, and we'd be happy to review this with the Subcommittee as well.
Thank you, and this will be going to Subcommittee. But I will continue the public hearing with any other proponents. Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. At this time, I'll open it up to any councilors, and again, this will be going to the zoning Subcommittee for further review.
Madam President?
Counselor?
Just as a note, I have to recuse myself from all discussions regarding this application and any votes, whereas I am the Clerk Treasurer of St. Jean's Credit Union. So I'll be recusing myself from all discussions. Thank you.
So noted. This will be going to zoning. Thank you.
Calendar item number six, unfinished business, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor provide each counselor and not a select few the ability to attend meetings regarding traffic or development.
Counselor?
Thank you. I've been told over the past couple of months, actually, past year, that certain councils are getting invited to certain meetings, certain development meetings, and it's not being extended to other councils. More importantly, if that's going to be the case, I believe that it should be just presented to the council as a whole. I believe that type of selection isn't appropriate, and more importantly, I don't believe it lends itself well to the council. Thank you.
Any other councilors wishing to speak? Counselor Rizzo?
Yeah, I will say that I think since this issue was first brought up, I believe by Counsel Rotundo, and actually, when we talked about traffic flows on Revere Beach and so on, that, you know, some councilors were able to weigh in on it and others weren't. There have been at least one meeting that I'm aware of. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend when they planned it, but there was one meeting where I believe they did send out an invitation. But again, it's coming down to information that's being shared with the City Council. I had submitted a motion that talked about issues like this a while back, following up on some motions that hadn't been responded to, and got a bunch of information back, none of which answered questions that I had. So I think we still have a continuing problem of getting information that this City Council needs. We are very much part of the process, and we should be treated as such. Thank you very much, Madam President.
So noted. Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. As we know, the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee met this evening before this council meeting. We had, well, listed as two items, but we actually had three items to take up. The first one was the numbering of houses, which a lot of information was disseminated there, not enough yet, and we're gonna...
Keep it in committee?
Continue. We're gonna keep that in committee and try to solve what looks like a bigger problem than anybody anticipated. So that'll stay in committee. The other two items are an ordinance relative to departmental revolving funds, which was voted out favorably, and I'll ask for a vote, as I will, for the parity salary ordinance, which was also voted out favorably. So I'll be looking for a roll call vote on each of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We'll start by taking up the, let me see, departmental funds, and I'll order this to a second reading. Boarded on a third and final reading. Roll call for engrossment or demn.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance relative to departmental revolving funds? Counselor Guanasso? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe? Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowoselski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rizzo? Yes. Counselor Rotundo? Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been engrossed and ordained.
Next, we'll take up calendar item number nine. We'll order this to a second reading. Order it on a third and final reading. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve the parity salary ordinance for Section J with the Revere Revised Ordinances? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe? Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito? Yes. Counselor Nowoselski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Present.
Present. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo? Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been engrossed and ordained.
We already took up the appointments subcommittee under suspension, so at this time, we will go to communications.
Counselor item number 13, communication from James DePaolo, 849 Revere Beach Parkway, requesting time to discuss a rat problem near his home.
Is Mr. DePaolo here? No? Place on file?
Motions, calendar item number 17. Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that HYM, the city of Revere, and the various building trades unions enter into a PLA or MOU for the development of Suffolk Downs.
So Counselor Rotundo, seeing as you have four motions on the agenda this evening, we won't take up the other one. Which three would you like to speak on?
Sure. I would like to speak on 17, 20, and 21. And I believe Counselor Rizzo will be taking up 18 from me. Yep.
I think you guys are looking at an older version.
I want to grab the union to see if they can come in here. I have a feeling they're gonna want to be in here for one of those motions.
All right, so Counselor Rotundo...
Speaks for itself.
17 speaks for itself? That was brief. Anyone else on Counsel Rotundo's motion regarding HYM? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item 19.
Madam President.
18, sorry.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor provide the city council with a copy of the audit performed in 2017. The audit cost the taxpayer $72,000, and the results should be made public.
Counselor Rizzo, I believe, is taking this up for Counsel Rotundo, so we'll open it up to Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would say the motion speaks for itself.
Point of information. I think we have a different calendar of items on... Ours, our agenda items are numbered differently than what you have.
The one item that was different was the Legislative Affairs Committee Report. Council order 18-22 was added regarding the property address assignments.
They'll all shift down a number, but they're in the same order. So we're on order 18-171, if that is any clarification. 18-171, so from there, move down whatever your number is on. Counselor?
Motion speaks for itself. I don't know if anybody else wants to speak on it. Motion speaks for itself, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. This is crazy. I don't know why I don't have this. I've been asking for it for well over a year. What's the mystery behind it? I was told that there was some major, major issues within the city that we needed this audit, that this audit was tantamount to, I don't know, Rice Krispies as far as I'm concerned. I'm still waiting to hear the snap, crackle, pop. But this was an issue that I asked that we have the state auditor involved, that we asked that they do the audit of the city, because there was questions of malfeasance. And I just want to know, with all the rumors and innuendo that was made during that period, where's the beef? So I want my study. I want my audit. I paid for it, and I damn well better get it. I don't feel like going to court to ask for it again. But if I have to, I guess I'll end up having to take the city to court for another public record. Talk about transparency.
Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 19, this is council order 18-172. Motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the mayor requests JBX developers to appear before the city council to discuss any changes to the plans that were presented to the city council in order to receive a special permit for the construction of a hotel at 49-54 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Madam President?
Sorry, we're still explaining the numbers to our colleagues. Counselor Guanasso?
Madam President, I've been hearing conversation from different folks about what's going on at that location. There doesn't appear to be any communications ongoing. It doesn't seem like any permits were sought. And when the conversation was before us and the public hearing was held, we all gave high praise for this particular developer to come in and be the catalyst of Revere Beach with this new hotel. And lo and behold, now, we don't hear from anybody from there. And I'm hearing stories that I'm not, I don't have firsthand knowledge on, but I hear conversations, it's not that they have a new developer, that they have a new... Everything's new. And so if that's the case, and if it's just not a rumor, then we have to have them before us to discuss what's taking place there. And I'd like to see them appear at our next regular meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Great motion, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo?
This is definitely an issue. In fact, author to echo some of your concerns, during that period, I had asked them who their equity partner was, who was going to do the development. And in fact, part of the reason why I had voted for this special permit was based on those very issues. Now, those same rumors that you're hearing, I'm hearing as well. But this is something that the mayor and the Economic Development Department should be, you know, a foot on. They should be the one finding out what's going on with this development. It's supposed to be a hotel down there. And this is the development that the mayor actually came up and supported. And so this is something that I want to find out what's going on. I'm sure the mayor has an idea of what's going on. If he doesn't, I'm sure he'd be the person to get these developers before us and find out what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. I think everybody remembers that I had the most reservations of anybody about this group because I didn't feel they had enough experience. I was assured that because of their property in New York and the project they did there, and all this money from China and all this, and they were self-contained and all this good stuff, as far as... I was still not completely comfortable, but in the end, I was convinced that even if we permitted this, someone would buy this and build a hotel. And I don't know if that's where we're at, but I understand from the little investigation I've done that someone named Jeff and Blair, Blair is the daughter, I think, who's taken over the project, should be included if my colleague would let me amend his motion, to include those people.
Madam President, I want whoever is responsible for this development to appear before us. And if they're going to abandon the project, then we ought to know. And this motion, by the way, has to be approved by the mayor, so the mayor will be informed of it. And if he has any input in it, he will also add that to it. But I want them to appear before us to get firsthand knowledge, rather than me hearing it from somebody else, what's taking place.
Right. So if we can just add Jeff and Blair to that motion, it may help us. That's the names that I got through my little investigation, so they're supposedly the key players. So let's see what happens when they come up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak on this?
If I may briefly speak from the chair. I think this is a great motion on behalf of Counselor Guanasso. And if anything, I hope that it isn't what it seems to be, but it seems that it is. Perhaps it's something we can look into as a council, we could discuss with the city solicitors. What conditions can we put on special permits, such as if the property is flipped or if there's a new owner or a new party involved, that we would have the power to revoke that special permit? Because I think that's a huge catch, so great due diligence on behalf of the ward.
Three, Counselor? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 20, this is council order number 18-173. Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor requests the fire chief to appear before the city council to discuss standards of care.
Counselor Rotundo?
I'll save my comments for when the chief comes, or more importantly, anybody else for that matter. I think that, quite frankly, we need to have a standard of care to protect the department, and more importantly, to ensure a higher level of care for our constituency. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 21, this is council order 18-174. Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor requests the fire chief to have an ambulance stationed at the Point of Pines Fire Station as soon as possible.
Counselor?
Thank you. With the upcoming summer season and increased population down the beach, more importantly, down at the Point of Pines, I think it's probably the safest thing to do is to station at least one or two ambulances within the area. I know recently, there was a question of time to get to a person down at, God bless you, the Point of Pines Yacht Club, in which there was a question of about 15 minutes as to when this person was seen. And that's a very, very long time, in particular, since there was no traffic in the time of day. There shouldn't have been an issue with getting there. That said, more importantly, has been brought to the council's attention, to be quite honest with you, we can't put a ladder truck down there. They're talking about possibly putting a pump truck down there. But in the meantime, I think at the very least, we should have an ambulance down there. And quite frankly, when we do have a pump truck down there, we should also have an ambulance down there as well. Because currently, we don't have an ambulance service, and quite frankly, the Fire Department cannot transport people, which is the biggest issue. So, and that'll be a discussion for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm familiar with the incident at the Point of Pines Yacht Club because I got a call from people involved. And they also told me that it was 15 minutes for an engine to respond. And I felt that was way out of line, as far as I was concerned. And I did some checking with the Fire Department, and the information they gave me was that the call came in around in the 7 to 8 o'clock timeframe, that they left Freeman Street Engine 5. The response time from Freeman Street to the Point of Pines Yacht Club was 6 minutes, according to their records. And 10 minutes after that, they cleared the Point of Pines Yacht Club. That's my understanding. So that's all I have to go on. But I think if 6 minutes, that was a pretty good rundown there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other counselors? No? There's some people in the audience? Former counselor?
Thank you very much, Madam President. John Accarigio, 30 Grates Road, Revere, retired fire lieutenant, 32 years with the Fire Department. It's imperative that you have a pump down there, not so much an ambulance. The pump is very, very important because if you have a house fire, the pump is there to put water and attack the fire. You have an ambulance there, and you have a house fire in the Pines area, you really can't do much with it. The first priority is to have a pump there with three firefighters year-round. Because now with the building you have on Revere Beach Boulevard, it's all wooden structures, and it could catch fire fast. They're large buildings. It's getting more heavily populated down there. So it's important that you open the fire station. What Boston is doing, they're rebuilding all their old fire stations and getting new apparatus for the city of Boston. Marty Walsh is doing that. So either we put a new building there, or we refurbish the building. But you need to get a pump there as soon as possible because now the summer is coming, and you're gonna have a lot of traffic, more traffic than ever. Then you've got the sandcastles coming. So it's important that we address the problem. Get the pump there, open the station, and let's protect the people in the Pines area. Thank you very much.
Sure. I think Counselor Rotundo...
Counsel Accarigio? Yes. I got a question for you. Do you think that we need a ladder truck down the beach as well?
On the Boulevard, you can put Engine 5 and a ladder truck in the Ocean Avenue area on the Boulevard, because now you have more high-rise. And I think instead of another ladder truck, you would use a tower unit. You'll have two ladder trucks and a tower unit, and you'll have two ladder truck response to all those high-rises. So I would put a new fire station, close Engine 5, and have a ladder and a pump either on the Boulevard or Ocean Avenue. That's the way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Any other people wishing to speak before I open it back up to the council?
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I just want to clarify a few points of information. I'm not speaking for or against this motion. I just want to share what happened at the yacht club that night. I was in attendance. There was an elderly gentleman. He fainted due to low blood pressure and dehydration. The response time from Revere Police and the fire was fantastic. However, when they get there, to Counsel Rotundo's point, they couldn't transport the victim. There was no way to move him. So he's literally laying on the floor. The police are there, the fire is there, and no one can do anything. So we need something down there. We need some faster response time. Thank you.
Madam President, that's the issue right there. Tell me the last time we had a major fire in Revere. Once, twice, maybe three times a year? I can guarantee you that the medical calls that we have in the city are exponentially higher than the fires that we have by a thousand. By a thousand. And when that person, who I know personally, who ended up going to the Mass General, who had a heart condition, minutes is the difference between life and death. And he's very lucky that he didn't have... And by the way, Eric, you were one of the people that actually helped him, and I want to give you some credit for that, and thank you. But at the end of the day, you need to ensure that you have the ability to transport. That's part of the reason why I want an ambulance service run by the Fire Department. And I've had resistance by that in the past from the union. And you know what? We're losing millions of dollars by not having an ambulance service in the city of Revere. They do it in other communities. It works well. They actually have a return. But more importantly, the greater return is that the constituents are getting a higher level of care. They're not waiting that extra five minutes for the ambulance to come by. They're not waiting for that extra five minutes for the transport of that patient. Because when you have low blood pressure, when you're not breathing, that's the difference between anoxia and losing a vital organ, or for that matter, your life. And there is no joke with that. And I know there's some members of this council that know more about that than I care to share. So at the very least, no matter how good we have it right now, we can always make it better. Thank you.
Counselor Powers, did you have a final thought?
I just have a point of information. I have spoken to the chief regarding this, and that building right now is in deplorable condition. I don't think it would be wise to put an ambulance in there. If they could arrange to have an ambulance standing by outside the building with limited access for the attendees to go into the building, that would be fine. As far as fires, we had two fires at 500 Revere Beach Boulevard within the past five years, and they were substantial fires too. One fire was so bad that they required them to put a sprinkler system in there, which the fire... To get them to do that, the fire has to be very severe. Okay? And as far as a ladder truck down there, I certainly think, down the road, with all this new development coming into the city, and the resources from this development, the funding, we certainly would be capable to put a ladder truck down there. That's number one. And number two, when you're building a fire station today, you have to have enough room on that second floor, which they would have, to put women's facilities in there, otherwise you're gonna find yourself in the middle of a lawsuit. otherwise, you're gonna find yourself in the middle of a lawsuit, because you could at some point have a couple of women working a shift down there, and you can't put them in with the men, for sure, otherwise, you're gonna wind up in a serious problem. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors?
If I may, very briefly, give my two cents on this from the chair, this has come up before, since I've been on the council, and we did discuss it. I have my reservations. I think there's no doubt that with everything going on down the beach, we need more support in terms of a pump and a ladder and those types of facilities, but this was specific to an ambulance. And, I remember the last time this came up, some things that we spoke with Chief Doherty about were the liability and some other issues. If we go years back, Revere did have ambulances, I'm going back to like, I believe, like the 60s, so it was something that we did have, so I think that there's definitely more that we can look into, but I am just having some more questions, I guess.
Madam President, if I may, thank you. I don't know what happened that night, as far as Cataldo getting over there, we don't know the circumstances. I know Cataldo has been to my house numerous times, and they've always been there within two or three minutes after the first responders, and I remember several times, they were there before the first responders. Now, I know it depends where they are at a particular moment, and what, but, you know, I don't know if it's really necessary to station one there, or at least nearby. I know the building itself is bad, and I wouldn't even put one outside, because the way the, you know, the bricks could fall over, but I think maybe in the, I don't, like I said, I don't know, but usually, if there's a problem, they'll call somebody in from Lynn to cover the Pines area, so I question, I do have reservations on actually stationing an ambulance at that location. Thank you.
So noted. Counsel Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's, I think it's, it's worthy of asking the question, but my only curiosity is, you know, and I'm thinking of the Pines, obviously, and you wanna have coverage there, but if we have Cataldo, which is on Route 60, it's closer to the Pines than it would be to the corner of Ward 4 up on Reservoir Ave or up on Suffolk Ave, so I mean, at what point do you say that we need to have, we would have to have one stationed in every corner of the city? And, again, I totally agree, you know, you wanna, you have something, you have someone with a problem, you know, seconds matter, and I know Counsel Rotundo knows that firsthand, being in the field, but it's, at what point does that extend to that? And, that's my only curiosity. But, the Pines, I mean, we all know the Pines need a fire station, we all know the Pines need fire coverage, and I know that the city all agrees on that, I think every council totally agrees that there needs to be a pump, there needs to be a renovated fire station, or a new fire station, and a fully serviced, fully serviced staff there. But, as far as the ambulance service, unless we were to get into the city of, the business of being an ambulance service, how could you say only one section of the city would have a stationed ambulance?
Point of information.
See your point, Counselor.
I believe that currently, and I'm sure that they can, the fire department can correct me, that we have five ambulances, I think, dedicated to the city, and more importantly, that you have, I believe, Winthrop, Chelsea, Lynn, that have ambulance service provided by Cataldo as well, and generally, what happens, in my experience, having worked for them in the past, is that when they need to get an ambulance, it's usually they draw from the closest community that doesn't have a need at that moment, and backfill accordingly. So, at any one moment, you can have as many as seven ambulances in this city, to as little as three, because they're either in town dropping people off, or what have you.
All right, thank you, counselors. This will be going to public safety.
Calendar item number 22, Counsel Order 18-175, motion presented by Counsel Powers, that the mayor request the DPW to repair two sections of guardrail directly across from 63 Mills Ave.
So, Counsel Powers and I did speak about these before the meeting, and, because typically, motions of these natures do go to the 311, but it was brought to my attention that these issues were not addressed, so Counsel Powers is bringing them before the council. Counselor?
Excuse me, thank you, Madam President. They were partially addressed, but I think this could fall into the category of unfinished business. Thank you.
On the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 23, this is Counsel Order 18-176, motion presented by Counsel Powers, that the mayor request the DPW to repair the sinking sidewalk in Catch Basin directly across from 25 Wadley Ave.
Counsel Powers?
Thank you, and there, this has been supplied before the information, it's still, it is also a drainage problem on Wadley Avenue, and I'd like to see that addressed, and this can go to unfinished business also. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else?
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I'd just like to say, during the flooding that we had earlier this year, I wouldn't doubt that all the catch basins along Mills Avenue and along adjacent side streets have issues. When we flooded, the weight of that water deteriorated what's underneath, so we saw this happen on John Avenue, and now we're seeing it on Wadley. Is it possible for the city to do an inspection of each one all the way up?
I'm sure it's something that we could definitely look into.
Yeah, that's something, that's something that can happen. We had this happen probably a dozen years ago on Gilbert Avenue, and the, those drains go right out to the beach, but unfortunately, they're buried, and it's very difficult to get at them. So, what I've requested is that they go in there and go out and televise those drains as far out as they can, and find out what the obstructions are, and that would solve the problem. Also, there's a piece of roadway that's been seriously undermined down there, and I had them get on and put some cones down there the other day, and the way to resolve that, I guess, is that part of that roadway's gonna be, have to cut out, be cut out, and the back of it near the river backed up. There's, you're very limited in what you can do, because of the Army Corps of Engineers and DEP, you can't really do what you'd like to do. Thank you.
As an ECE, I know that area is under a lot of concern. Further down Mills Avenue, they actually put jersey barriers to prevent some of that asphalt from eroding into the river, so maybe that's a possibility all the way up. Thanks.
So noted. Thank you. On the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. There's no further business, but before we adjourn, I just have a couple of points of information that I'd like to make. First, I was remiss in mentioning my colleague, Counselor Patch, is under the weather and was not able to be here this evening, however, he did want to express his support for Paul Argenzio for that position, and I was remiss in mentioning that earlier, so I wanna put that on the record, that Counselor Patch is definitely in support of that, for a longtime friend and colleague. Second, I wanted to make note of our Memorial Day services, so Monday, the 28th, the City of Revere will be holding its annual commencement at 11:00 a.m. in front of the Legion on the lawn, so we wanna take a moment to make note of that, and pay respect to all of those that made the ultimate sacrifice at this Memorial Day. Second, I'd also like to note that there is a road race happening on June 2nd, and this will start at 8:00 a.m. at the West Revere School Complex. Any other counselors have any points or notes? Seeing as there is none, this council will be adjourned until June 4th. Thank you all, and have a great evening.